Go ahead, Mayor. Yep, thank you.
I call to order the special, the virtual special meeting of the Lakewood City Council on February 3rd, 2025 at 5:03 PM. For the clerk, please call the wall.
Strom.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
LeBier.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mea Guerrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
And Sinks.
Here.
Mayor Shum, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial or business interest. May I have a motion, please?
Mayor Shum, I move to go into an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition or lease of real properties pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Print 4, Print A, and Lakewood Municipal Charter 2.15, Print C, Print 3, to receive reports on the progress and status of negotiations, including counteroffers, and to instruct negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402, Print 4, Print E, and Lakewood Municipal Charter 2.15, Print C, Print 2.
Is there a second? Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of moving into executive session, do thumbs up or arrow up. More?
Yeah, I don't hear any objection.
No objections.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and turn channel eight off and...
We're now back in special meeting. There is not any further business arising out of the executive session. So we will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting. And I need a motion to move into a second executive session, please.
Mayor Strom, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal matters pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, 4B, and Lakewood Municipal Charter 2.15, C4. Such legal advice arising out of legal issues and concerns arising out of adopted ordinance 2024-28, which began as a citizens-initiated ordinance to modify Chapter 14.16 pertaining to park and open space dedication and to receive legal advice on current and anticipated litigation arising out of ordinance 2024-28.
Second.
Mayor, before we take a vote, I need to clarify. Right before the motion was made, you said we hereby adjourn this special meeting. That's not what you meant. You meant to say we've exited the executive session. So just to clarify for anyone listening, we have not actually adjourned this special meeting.
Thank you very much for the clarification there. Okay, so we have a motion on a second. I will go ahead and call to order the executive session.
Mayor, we need a vote. I interrupted that with my comment.
Okay, all right. Yes, thank you, thank you. All right, we need a vote. Everybody, cast your vote, please. Is that, are we good?
Yeah, I'm not hearing any objections.
Okay, no objections. With that then, I will call to order the executive session on February 3rd, 2025 at 5:24 PM for the record. This is Mayor Wendy Strom. As required by open meetings law, this executive session is being electronically recorded. All individuals present will now state their names for the record, starting with War.
Okay, perfect. All right. The special meeting is now adjourned at 6:36 PM.
We'll start in 30 seconds.
I call to order the virtual workshop of the Lakewood City Council on February 3rd at 6:45 PM. Will the clerk please start us off with calling the roll?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors Cruz.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Mayak Guerrero.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
And Sinks.
Here.
Great. Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. Before we kick off our meeting tonight, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to share a number of things with community members that may be joining us on tonight's call and/or watching this recording after the conversation occurs on Monday night, February 3rd. Tonight's topic is a discussion around the Lakewood Municipal Code 14.16 relating to our parks and our open space dedication. For those of you that are joining us, as this is a topic of very high interest, for those of you that are trying to get to speed up on the topic, what I want to start us off with tonight is to give So what happens after tonight? Some of that will actually be determined throughout this conversation. So I don't want to say anything is set in stone as of right now, but I will share that. For those of our seasoned pros that may be joining us, our legislative process, you may be familiar, typically has a first reading and a second reading. What we will be doing, because of the high degree of interest with this particular one, is we will have a third reading. The second reading will be Monday, February 10th, next Monday. That will include a public hearing. We do not have public comment this evening, but it will include a public hearing on Monday, February 10th. And we welcome anyone to join us to share your thoughts or present evidence in person. You can do that also on our online platform on LakewoodSpeaks.org. Public comment, in fact, for that meeting is already open. This kind of input will help to ensure that we continue to make thoughtful decisions as we work to improve the long-term success of parkland around our city. So highly encourage you, if you have any thoughts, to please submit public comment either in person on February 10th, or via Lakewood Speaks. Separately, because we have committed to having that third reading, you know, and that was partially because of the complicated nature, but also because we have such a high level of interest in this policy, I want to also let everybody know that we will have that third reading, and that should be on Monday, February 23rd. Prior, that would be the third reading, which would theoretically be the night that that amendment, that next amendment, whatever it might look like, would be voted upon. That will also include a public hearing. So for any of you that are trying to understand, I hope that that helps set the stage a little bit for this evening. We will be talking through lots of council questions and potential ideas as we go. I do encourage you to reach out to any of your counselors or myself, and/or go to LakewoodSpeaks.org with any thoughts and comments you want to share with the community. So with that, I don't, we don't, Ms. Hudson, we don't have a formal presentation on here. I think council just dived in. Would you?
Mayor, can I correct one thing? You stated that the third hearing is on the 23rd. That's a Sunday. So it's actually February 24th, which is that Monday?
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, I know we've got a number of counselors that are here and eager with questions and/or thoughts on how we proceed through the evening. So I'll go ahead and hand the floor over. We'll start with Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for teeing that up so thoughtfully. I think, I think that hopefully will help folks tuning in and following all this, given, given how complicated some of this can, can easily get. I guess to, to start us off on this discussion, I, I'd like to, to put forward the suggestion that in terms of our discussion tonight, we base the discussion on the, the staff drafted ordinance that's been posted on Lakewood Speaks. I think that would be like a good basis for discussion and, and for a discussion of potential amendments to the underlying ordinance. Briefly, for three reasons. First, that ordinance aligns fairly reasonably with the Norris study, so it's tethered to, you know, what an expert assessment of Lakewood's park and open space requirements actually are. Second, as council has, has given voice to a number of times, as I think has been evident from the, from what we've seen over the last couple of months, and as we frankly, without getting into this further, you know, just heard an executive session, you know, the, the, the current framework that was adopted on November 4th really is shot through with legal issues and challenges. And so starting from that is just not, I think, a productive basis for this discussion. And three, you know, I, I'm sure we'll talk about this more. I think it's important, and, and there is a need to honor and listen to the over six thousand Lakewood residents that did sign a petition. And I think the, the staff drafted ordinance does that by meaningfully changing the open space requirement relative to what was in place a year ago. And we could talk about this further, but by creating a whole category of, of open space and public land that can exist on plots of land that can be privately maintained. So it, it does meaningfully move in the direction that I think a number of residents indicated they wanted, which was more open space. So in, in brief, I would suggest that our discussion be based on that ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lo. Counselor Maya Guerrero.
Yes. I, I think that I feel like relatively neutral to which one we work off of, because, and so with that in mind, I feel great about working off of the draft ordinance from staff rather than the current parkland statute. I think for many of the reasons that Counselor Lo just laid out, I believe that either one that we work from, the, the needs and the concerns that brought about this parkland petition from the community are, are what we will work towards, to really finding the, the, the support for that outcry, while also really trying to balance responsible development and prioritizing affordable housing in particular. And I, so for me, I think working from either is okay, and working from the ordinance that I think already, the, the draft, sorry, from the staff that I think already does increase the attention to parkland and open space, as Counselor Lo just laid out, but also does specifically speak to issues like affordable housing and the necessity for access to park and open space, and has some more thorough definitions in it, is likely a wise place to start.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. As I looked through the study, I thought, and the pictures, especially the parkland dedication report, which people can look at online, but especially pages sixteen through twenty, alternative park typology. And I really loved the thoughtful presentation that the, that those that did the report, that they included in there, as well as the pictures. And so one thing that really struck me was that none of us want, you know, the Soviet-style block buildings, just building after building after building with no green space. We would like to have, as presented on page seventeen, a community garden, or page eighteen, a nature playground, or page nineteen, a dog park, page twenty, plaza. We all love that look. Now, of course, how do we get there? That's the real problem. How do we get there? Is it from fees in lieu? Is it from requiring this parkland dedication? So I just wanted to, first of all, start with that common ground, that we all want a beautiful Lakewood. We all want parks. We are blessed with many really good parks. But we want these aesthetically pleasing. And just to say that, yes, we will work to try to get there. And, and so I'm sure that that's what all of us as a council is going to work towards, you know, making, again, it a beautiful Lakewood that we can just all be really happy about being in the outdoors in. So thank you.
Mayor, pretend Charzai.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to build on Counselor Lo's point. I, I think that the staff drafts is a great place for us to start. We have a really clear picture on some of the recommendations that are rooted in research and, and the assessment and inventory that was put together over many months. And we also know from our community members, sort of what are the, the points that they want to make sure are continued and considered as we look to amend. And so I, I do think that we can take those efforts and apply them to the staff draft as like a good place to start. Otherwise, I am fearful, I mean, just to Counselor Sinks' point just a moment ago, like some of the things that we really appreciate from the report aren't quite captured in the current ordinance, because there wasn't time to allow for that report. So I think that not having some of those research points in there makes it a tougher place to start from. So I'd advocate for Counselor Lo's suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LeBier, was your comment or question on that topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to say ditto.
Okay, perfect. So that's where I was starting to see that there may be some consensus with that. Can we get some nodding heads? Starting with the staff draft, does that sound like a good place for folks? Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and we'll work from there. That, and, I mean, the beauty is, we have, we can have all of everything in front of us all at the same time. So let me get situated. It's getting not filled out. With that, we can, I don't know. I feel like maybe you guys, the, the best way to start, I don't necessarily feel like we need to go line by line. There's a number of these things in here that are not necessarily something that we need to spend time on. But why don't I give it to you all to bring forward thoughts on if we were to work from this draft, creating that as our next policy decision, what might we change within it that either brings out some of the things that have been discussed through this process of the Save Open Space Initiative, and/or I know there have been some other conversations, some other things that were rooted in the report, maybe that didn't make it to the ordinance, or things that just people have been thinking about in their own heads. So I would, maybe what we can do is, if we have some ideas on things that we would like to improve upon, or dive a little bit deeper into on this new draft ordinance, I'll kind of let you guys start the show, and we'll see where we go from there. Counselor Maya Guerrero.
I have a couple, but I will try to do my best to just go in order and, and take it at pace. I, the, this is actually something that I want to make sure that we keep and, and maybe sort of negotiate how it works best. But on page four of the draft ordinance, there is conversation around essentially definitions of what land, parkland, or open space can mean. And I think that when we're talking about the, the, those pictures that Counselor Sinks was referencing within the plan of an apartment building that has maybe an open central area, or like a large back area, that like it doesn't necessarily need to be a fully city park in order for the benefit of the green space, of the waterways, of the preservation of trees. And so specifically, it does talk about the accessibility. It also talks about public plazas, play spaces, trail segments, drainage areas, water areas, as all components that can be counted. And I think that that makes a ton of sense, as somebody who lived in one, was in an apartment building where we technically had a private green space access in the form of quite a large dog park, but that dog park maintained green space, community space, and old, old, older growth trees. And that was really an incredible asset there. I do specifically want to add, either here or where it's appropriate, something that is clear around public access, which it might be somewhere else besides these definitions, but that I think is a real component that folks are looking towards. And I would also be really interested in seeing something that is specific around preserving trees that already exist and are in
like some of the things that we really appreciate from the report aren't quite captured um, in the current ordinance because there wasn't uh, time to allow for that report. So I think that um, not having some of those research points in there makes it a tougher place to start from. So I'd advocate for Councilor Lowe's suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Labir, was your comment or question on that topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to say ditto.
Okay, perfect. So that's where I was starting to um see that there may be some consensus with that. Can we get some nodding heads? Um, starting with the staff draft, does that sound like a good place? For folks? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll work from there. Um, that and, I mean, the beauty is, we have, we can have all of everything in front of us all at the same time. Um, so let me get situated. It's getting not filled out. With that, um we can, I don't know, I feel like maybe you, you guys, the, the best way to start, I don't necessarily feel like we need to go line by line. There's a number of these things in here that are not necessarily something that we need to spend time on. But why don't I give it to you all to bring forward thoughts on if we were to work from this draft, creating that as our next policy decision, what might we change within it that either brings out some of the things that have been um, discussed through this process of the um, Save Open Space Initiative? And/or, I know there've been some other conversations, um, some other things that were ru- in, rooted in the report, maybe that didn't make it to the ordinance, or things that just people have been thinking about in their own heads. So I would, maybe what we can do is, if we have some ideas on things that we would like to improve upon or dive a little bit deeper into on this new draft ordinance, I'll kind of let you guys um, start the show and we'll see where we go from there. Councilor Matt Guerrero.
I have a couple, but I will try to do my best to just go in order and, and take it at pace. Um I, the, this is actually something that I want to make sure that we keep and, and maybe sort of negotiate how it works best, but on page four of the draft ordinance, um there is conversation around um essentially def- definitions of what land, parkland or open space can mean. And I think that when we're talking about the, the, those pictures that Councilor Singh was referencing um, within the plan of an apartment building that has maybe an open central area or like a large back area that, like, it doesn't necessarily need to be a fully city park in order for the benefit of the green space, of the waterways, of the preservation of trees. Um, and so specifically, um, it does talk about the accessibility. It also talks about public plazas, play spaces, trail segments, drainage areas, water um areas, as all components that can be counted. And I think that that makes a ton of sense as somebody who lived in one, was in a, in an apartment building where we technically had a private um, green space access in the form of quite a large dog park. Uh, but that dog park maintained green space, community space, and um, old, old, older growth trees. And that was really an incredible asset there. I do specifically want to um, add, either here or where it's appropriate, uh, something that is clear around public access, which it might be somewhere else besides these definitions, but that I think is, is a real component that folks are looking towards. And I would also be really interested in seeing um, something that is specific around preserving trees that already exist and are in good health. I think that's something that we've really heard about. Like I said, my personal example I'm pulling from involved keeping some old trees, but that, that is something that is um additive to uh, these types of privately maintained but um, publicly accessible green spaces. And then, to nobody's surprise, my other large space uh, a- area in this draft is going to be around like affordability um, and density and how those things make sense, but I will start with just this part.
Okay, thank you. And maybe we have um, Ms. Hodgson, do you, I know we've got a number of staff folks that are here and able to answer questions. Can we maybe get from somebody um, information with regards to how within the draft ordinance, the staff draft ordinance version, um affordable housing is, or is included in there?
Um, y- yes. I would ask Ross Williams to take a run at answering that. And if, and if he's not the person, it might be Travis. So Ross, can you try to answer that first and then tell me if it would be better with Travis?
Well, the ordinance, it does, does permit uh affordable housing, you'll see in the bottom of section fourteen sixteen point five oh, oh five oh. Uh, and it's also, again, re- re- reiterated in oh six oh, but also into the um uh, the actual procedure and defeat determination. One of the things we may recommend that is it's, instead of having each of those sections, we may want to put it in its own section specifically stating where we uh, be able to waive these fees or dedication requirements to work with affordable housing, at least you, meeting the criteria of eighty percent AMI, uh, of the area AMI to make those houses, those units more affordable. So we do have it currently in this ordinance. We may want to highlight that in a special, se- separate section to make it stand out versus how it's split up in there right now.
Thank you.
Councilor Matt Guerrero, does that address your thoughts and concerns?
I mean, it, it addresses them and that is helpful, but I don't want to take too much time, given that we're just at the start. I would say that I personally am interested in um not just discretion-based uh, exceptions for affordable housing at a certain level. Um, and even the potential encouragement of um, affordable housing to get the green space. So for example, uh, there is the potential to essentially say that like, if we have that fee in lieu, that could it go towards um, a fully affordable, like a one hundred percent affordable built by a nonprofit developer. And I don't think we can actually say that exact thing legally. Um, to be able to actually like get financial benefit to keep some of their green space and to um, exempt fully affordable developments more entirely rather than just discretionary. But I would also change the um, type of affordable housing from the eighty percent AMI um, over the next twenty years, de- de restrictions to actually be sixty percent AMI, so changing that threshold to be much more aggressively affordable. Um, and to specifically have a minimum of ten percent of the units at that rate, depending on the scale. So I will have, I have some specific equations there, I'm like working up that I don't quite, quite have right in this moment. Um, but those are the components that I have in my mind. A, not discretionary. B, raising the bar for it to be sixty percent rather than eighty percent in terms of who is getting um, this leniency. Um, and then the potential for fee and lose to actually be used for fully, fully affordable complexes or uh, multifamily unit areas to be able to develop the green space if they are able to set some uh, land aside. Those are things that I think could be worked in within some of the discretionary components, within some of the um, definitions components. I have more thoughts about how that all works in, but I think it depends on how the rest of this discussion is going, so I will chime back in.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Councilor Labir.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, you know, I don't have a ton of fully fleshed out ideas on this, but I do, I do think it's important that, you know, the residents uh, feel heard. And I, I think all the counselors who spoke before already mentioned that. So, one way I'm thinking about this too is just about giving clarity. And I, I mentioned this in previous discussions, but, you know, just trying to give clarity uh, to residents about where these fees will go and how it impacts them and how it benefits them. Um, so I think one thing I would, and, and I think it's also fair to admit um, that we're not going to solve all the problems in this ordinance uh, in this week or next week or the third reading. So I think this will have to continue to be a conversation um, that we build on this work. So I just also wanted to mention that. I don't think we'll solve um, all the issues, but I do think some small low-hanging fruit things might be to give some clarity to residents. So one thing I was thinking about with this ordinance perhaps is just talking and speaking to the fees going to the purchase of land. Um and, and not just, you know, park maintenance. I think park maintenance is important. But if we're talking about nexuses and need and not having enough open space and in parkland specific areas, I think um, it's probably worthwhile trying to give some clarity to residents that this is, you know, for preserving land uh, for their use. And I think I'll leave it at that for now, but I think that's an idea.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think this would be another good question, staff question. I'm not sure. Maybe Ross, you might be the, the one um, with all the knowledge on this. But I, there is some commu- confusion out there on where the fee in lieu goes. Um, I don't know to what extent it goes into maintenance, but there's a lot that goes into actually investment in the park. The idea is, you know, we're, we've got more people around here that are utilizing the park. It's been used for a number of things. You know, the Morse Park um, shop, Wright Park Improvement, the Dry Gulch Trail, Carmody Splash Park is a perfect example, and the pathway out there. Can you um, someone speak to how exactly fee and lieu is used now? And um, oh, I had a different question, another question that P G backed off that. Maybe I'll remember in a minute. Ross, I see your picture, so I'm guessing you're ready for us.
Uh, uh, I think I'm ready for it. Um, the Parkland Dedication Fee is collected and then kept in the area where it is collected. That's why the, the seven planning areas that you should see at the back of the, the current, the proposed ordinance is what was in the, the ordinance previously. So we keep the funds, whatever is collected in those particular areas. And then how we spend the, the funds, yes, if we have an opportunity for acquisition, we use those funds. We try to use those funds that, within those specific areas first, before we use money that can be used anywhere across the city. So we try to keep the, the, the area, the revenue that comes from those areas into those areas. The issue that we, the concern we have is just say it's going to be open to acquire, it becomes difficulty because we don't know how much money will be collected in one year until after it's collected, then we know how much we have in there. So it does have some uh length of time from when we get it to when we are a- actually have it, can get a budget to be spent and then to spend it a ti- at a time. So if we have an opportunity to acquire property, which we always are looking for, we try to keep funds available through our general uh, amount of, within the open space fund. Or uh, the new revenues that we've had has been very helpful in the Tabor Fund to uh, be able to go target specific uh, parcels, which we had brought to council. It's been a while since we brought a list of proposed acquisitions that we'd like to see happen out there to try to balance out our service uh, to the community. Everything that we use for improvements are to improve our capacity to serve the additional reven- residents that are in those areas where the money was generated.
That is helpful. And I guess to that point, Mayor, maybe, maybe there's something around language around capital costs, perhaps.
Uh, I just need to, need to add there that none of the money that comes from the park improvement fees and the, the land dedication goes towards maintenance. It's all for improving capacity and improving amount of park space that we do have in those particular areas of town.
That is helpful. Thanks, Ross.
Thank you. Uh, did you have any other questions?
No, it was really just a statement, just more about, you know, if we put that kind of language in the ordinance, it just might be helpful when residents read it. That, you know, how those monies are spent, if it's capital cost, if it's that sort of thing.
Okay. Um, so what I'm going to do, you guys, is there's a lot to cover tonight. And like, we're starting this big and we have to kind of wield it down to something so that staff has something to work on tonight. We have promised the community that we will have something to be voting on on Monday, so that means our city account attorney's office will be working feverishly this week. So what I'm going to do is, we'll start kind of high level and then we'll need to nail some of these down with consensus before we get off of our call this evening so that we can give some clear staff direction. So um, I bring that up. So I've got Councilor Matt Guerrero, your desire for affordable. Um, Councilor Labir, your desire for some specific, specificity on spending. And then we're going to start a list, and then we'll kind of circle back to get a little bit more refined once we've got kind of some high-level ideas from everybody on what we're looking to accomplish in um, any adjustments that we're making. So with that, um, Councilor Nystrom, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, uh, Ross, I just had a question on, on the comment you, that you just made, and then I have a couple of other points, but back in April when we had that study session, we had a discussion about these districts that were laid out. And the assumption at that time, um was that the money, so if you have a development in District Seven, that the, the fee in lieu goes to that district. And I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he was on the call. And he, he said that was incorrect. So I'd like to get a clarification on that at some point. Um, because that's a bit confusing.
And I'm not sure who, who may have said that at the, at the uh, April meeting, but it, that was incorrect. We do keep the money within the planning area where it was generated and that is spent within those areas. It hasn't been a problem because we have plenty of projects in every area of the city to expend those, those funds.
Okay, um, and I guess it again, just to, to, just to make things very clear for people and they have a better understanding. Um, you know, I guess this is more a question for Kathy Hodgson. Can we get a delineation in the budget that shows the amount of fees collected and where they're going? Um, because at this point, it's, it's unclear, and I think that's part of the confusion. Or is that not available?
I don't know why we couldn't do that. I'm guessing we already do that. Where did Ross go? Ross, don't we have a running list? I, I actually, I think I've seen that before.
And we have a list of uh, projects and where we have spent the money and how much we received each month. And that hasn't necessarily been shared in the budget book, but it's an internal document that we've, we've uh, I've generated for the last forty years. Excuse me, sorry. But I, I have been the one that's been tasked with uh, putting that together, showing how much money has been collected in each of the planning districts and then what we spent it on and how much was, at the end of the year, how much money is left in those funds. Uh, we can probably, uh, I'm not sure if it fits in the budget book or some sort of manual, but uh, it's something that we can produce uh, yearly at the end of the year after we finish the audit adjustments.
Oh, after the audit, I was going to say, we could even um, um, post it, say quarterly, probably. But we'll have to work that through. Um, that's absolutely something that can be made available to the public, without a doubt.
Okay, thank you.
That seems like a softball. Can we go ahead and get some consensus on that? Everybody interested in that information? Okay, perfect. All right, Councilor Nystrom, the floor is yours again.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Let's just count on that happening, so it, we don't need to do anything else with that.
Okay, all right. Well, you're welcome. There's your softball. I guess the other, I, I talked to Councilor Labir the other day, and maybe um, you can elaborate on this as well, but um uh, you know, if we can also earmark some of these funds for saving trees. Um, we, we seem to be rapidly cut, cutting down mature trees and that presents another set of problems, but um, if we had money dedicated, you know, because it's going to be more and more difficult to have trees survive after they're planted, so seedlings, they're, you know, a- as things get warmer and warmer, it's going to be more and more difficult to plant new trees and have them survive. So, um, and I know, Councilor Labir, if there's anything else you want to add it on, add on there, my brain is not completely fog-free tonight, so.
I think you did a good job there. I, I think one thing she was talking about, isn't there already a fee for trees when they're cut down? And where does that go? Does that all, so part, end up in the, some other bucket, or do we know where those dollars go? Maybe that helps, Paula, sorry.
So I may ask Travis to help with this one. I can tell you, we have a line item for a tree canopy. And I, I'm trying to remember where that was funded. It was at least a hundred thousand dollars annually, and it has been um, for the last couple of years. But the question about a charge for trees, um, Travis, can you take a, take a run at that? It's a little different than the Tree Canopy Program.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. Good evening. Um, so if in the process of developing a site plan, trees are scheduled, uh, mature trees are scheduled to be removed, they have to be replaced um, in terms of the amount of caliper. So if you remove twelve inches worth of trunk, you have to replace twelve inches worth of trunk. And generally, the new ones coming in are smaller, so they're, you know, two inches at a time. So you often have to put five or six new trees to remove a small one. The time that money comes in is if there is not space on the site to put all the trees that you're required to replace, then you retract, you are required to contribute money that the city can plant trees in that area with that money. So first, again, first option is to replace them on-site, um, in, equaling the caliper that you've removed. If those don't fit, then we accept money and the city plants them in that area.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I guess if nothing else, um this has, this whole initiative has brought to light that we have a problem with setbacks. Um, and I know that's a zoning code change. Um, I also have concerns with the way this is written. This exclusively gives discretion on making significant decisions um, completely on the director uh, to make those determinations. I, and I think a lot of citizens would like to see some checks and balances there. Or, in other words, if, for example, and I'm just throwing this out there hypothetically, we have, um, and, and I know there's work being done to have uh, citizen engagement in developments much earlier at the initial um, submission point, so that uh, people are aware and they can be more engaged. I, I think if we are going to take a fee in lieu um, for a property, that we should be, um, in other words, dedicate the par- parkland as it's earmarked. And if that's not going to be done, then that should be an exception that comes before council. And I'm not trying to create a lot of, uh, you know, I mean, a lot of these developments take years to come through. So anything that happened in between now and then, but I, I think we're, we're, I think it's pretty clear that citizens are upset that fees have been taken over and over and over again. And um, and yes, the city has probably um, utilized that money for the intended purpose. But I think there is an opportunity here to make sure that um, some of the, the parks that were pictured or the, the, the um, layouts layouts that were pictured in the consultant, um, report. Um, I think those are, are a vast improvement over some of the things that we currently have being built in Lakewood. But I think in all fairness, that there should be a, a second, um, vetting of this process. And again, if that has to happen, when zoning changes, um, or something of that nature, I would rather see it done in this ordinance. But, but I think that's a legitimate concern and I think it's fair, um, to, to citizens in general.
So Councilor Nystrom, what I'd like to do with your permission is write down staff discretion. And we'll have that on our table that we're gonna come back to when we're ready to drill down a little bit more in detail. What, and we'll go through like a round of council questions. And then when we pick up these, these topics, like the affordable, like the specificity, um, and the staff discretion, we'll circle back and like drill deeper. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I guess, well, I had one other thought on that, but, um, I'll come back to that. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councilor Low.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of quick thoughts. Let me, I've got, I've, I've got one thing in the ordinance that I, I just want to lift up and, and plus one to what Councilor Matt Guerrero already said, that I think is really good, and then four possible areas for amendments, some of which have already been mentioned. So one that I, I think is just worth calling out is like an important change from the way we did business a year ago. And it's, it's a really important substantive change that's in this ordinance is fourteen dash sixteen oh forty E toward the top of page four. So this is the, the, this is, Councilor Mike Guerrero already alluded to this. This is the, the, the part of the ordinance that says, um, all our portion of the park dedication required may remain in private ownership, provided the privately owned parkland is open to the public use and three acres or less, um, and, and three acres or less. I, I think that's a critical part of this ordinance and part of how we get the community gardens, the plazas, the public space that Counselor Sinks did a, did a wonderful job of sort of describing and calling the public's attention to. I think that's a really important, that's, that's kind of one of the core beating hearts of, of the, the draft ordinance. And I think it's really important to, to preserve that. I think that, that works well. And I think we should call that out as like a really important new category we're creating. That's not a park dedication and not fee in lieu. And something that we want to see a lot more of for all the reasons that Counselor Sinks described better than I could. Um, in terms of possible amendments, uh, and I'll try to take these quickly. One, um, so if you looked bottom of page five, fourteen sixteen seventy C, that's the paragraph that talks about the value of the fee in lieu. Um, I think we might want to be open to just some, some tweaks to that, to make that as, as prescriptive as possible in terms of making sure that, that the, the fee in lieu is, is fair market value. And is, you know, that, that was, that, there was a lot of public concern about where the fee was set over the last four years. There was a lot of commentary that it was set lower than it, it should have been. We already had a study session last year where we sort of talked about the fee in lieu going up. Um, so I, I guess I'd like, uh, and I, I might, I may be able to follow up with a couple of, um, like, there may be a way to, to just button that down by tying it specifically to how the county tax assessor's office, um, appraises the value of real property in the city. Maybe we can just sort of make that a little bit stronger by, by tying it to the way the county assessor's office already, already assesses value. So that would be one area. Um, a second would be fourteen sixteen seventy D. So this is the top of page six. Um, this is something that I think Counselor Labir already, already mentioned, this idea of acquisition versus improvement. I agree that it would be, I think, again, big picture, we want to, you know, over six thousand people did sign the citizen petition. I think one of the key, key things they, they clearly said they wanted more of was more park acquisition. I think setting some guardrails and saying that at least, maybe not all of, maybe that's not realistic, but a significant portion of the fee in lieu revenue, um, is set aside for park acquisition. Uh, I think, I think that would be a, a good thing for us to look at. Um, you know, the, the Tabor Fund was already mentioned. The Tabor Fund is another important source of park, of, of park maintenance. And so, you know, I think, I think it could be possible for the city to use the Tabor Fund to do more park maintenance and really prioritize fee in lieu dollars for park acquisition. I think that would be strategic. Um, a, a second, another thing related to that, that I think we might look at, that this maybe gets to this idea of, of equality versus equity. Um, given that there are parts of the city that, that clearly need more parkland than other parts, um, I think we should consider changing that, that part of the, the ordinance so that you, you don't just have to spend all of the money that you get in one district on park acquisition within that district, that there is the possibility of at least some of the dollars from areas that have a lot of parkland going to acquire parks in other parts of the city that have a real shortage of parkland. I think we should, we should consider loosening that to, to, to allow for that flexibility. Um, a third thing I, I want to propose that might be frankly, a little bit more controversial and worth discussion is the idea of some sort of, um, increase to the fee in lieu. One, for larger parcels of land as an incentive to, to try to get developers that are moving larger parcels of land to go with parkland dedication or the, the privately operated community gardens or plazas that Counselor Sinks describes. In other words, fee and lieu costs go up if the plot of land is larger. And maybe also fee and lieu goes up if you're in a part of the city that is particularly short of parkland. That would be another way of, you know, retaining fee and lieu, but really strongly encouraging that in those parts of the city where we really need parkland, that a developer sets aside parkland or at least, at least sets aside privately held publicly, public space. That one, I think, has some very meaningful policy trade offs. So I think that one is, is one where reasonable people can clearly disagree. And I'd love to hear what other counselors think about that idea. Um, but in other words, really, really leveraging the fee in lieu as an incentive and, and sort of search, so increasing it by, say, twenty-five percent, just for, for the sake of argument in parts of the city where parkland is particularly short. And then finally, I, I totally agree with Counselor Maya Guerrero about the affordable housing provision, um, at the bottom of page four. Uh, the, I, I think my shorthand on that is the may should become shall. In other words, uh, you know, to actually to Counselor Nystrom's point, I agree. I think there are parts of this ordinance where, given that the immense public interest in this, we may want to not have it be totally subject to staff discretion. Um, I would include affordable housing in that. So I think if, if the housing is affordable, I think, I think we should say the fee in lieu is waived, period, not staff has the discretion to waive. I would maybe even go one step further on that. I think Counselor Matt Guerrero already alluded to this. Um, for affordable housing developments that do, do what Counselor Sinks described, set aside privately held land, a community garden, a plaza, which we really want. I think that we should then allow them to get a bonus um, on top of that. So not only do they not have to pay fee in lieu, but if they're gonna set aside a plaza anyway, they should get a bonus that could maybe be a cash fee from the fee in lieu fund, right? That would, that would actually help subsidize a community garden and/or a density bonus. So you say, okay, you're setting aside a community plaza, you're creating a community garden. Now you can build two stories taller, for instance, or maybe both those things. So sorry, that was a lot, but that was my, my, just for the sake of efficiency, that was my sort of shortlist of places that I would, I would really lean in on some changes to this ordinance and happy to double click on any of those. Um, but those are the, those are the amendments that I was, at least from, from my two cents was hoping to vote on. And by the way, um, my apologies, I have COVID. Uh, spoiler for those wondering why this was switched entirely to virtual. I was the COVID public health risk. So if I'm, if I'm slightly off my game the rest of this discussion, um, that's why, uh, my apologies to the community. If you wanted this to be in person, it's, it's on me. And my apologies to the council if, uh, if I'm slightly less coherent than usual tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Roger. I, I appreciate the creeping crud.
For the public, we were all together on Friday right before Roger realized, um, that was happening. So we are all being, um, abundantly cautious this evening, hence the virtual nature of our conversation. Thank you, Councilor Low. Uh, Mayor Protam.
Yes, thank you. Um, would reinforce Counselor Labir's point, uh, in spelling out. I think that what, how it's written now, um, just helping folks understand with an immense clarity that this isn't like a cash, um, grab to maintain all of our beautiful parks, that this really has like a concerted, um, effort in what it's doing. Um, two things that I would point to for possible consideration for amendments is just in that, on page five, in that fourteen dash sixteen oh seven oh, particularly in C of that section, um, that annual review, is there a role of council in that? Because we had, um, there had been some, um, there had been an expanded amount of time between those reviews. And so I don't know if that needs to be annualized or whatever, but just, you know, some sort of presentation from staff, here's what fair market value is, here's what ours are. But is there a role that us on council could play? And then to be responsive to what we're hearing from the community and, and sort of what were some of the bigger themes we saw. I do, um, believe that staff discretion is important in this and being added back. But I, I want to understand too, is there an opportunity at certain thresholds where, um, you know, we, the, so I'm thinking about in the stakeholder work that I did for this, we heard from the folks in Miller Heights, right behind Westland. And one of the things that they were suggesting was, um, land would be defaulted at a certain amount, staff discretion for another amount, and then it comes to council. So I'd love to offer up some numbers on that, you know, just to get us started of staff discretion or land being, um, the default for any units more than a hundred. And then from one oh one to two fifty, staff has some discretion. And then two fifty and above, that has to come to city council. There couldn't be, let's remove the politicization of staff in this. Um, and gives council an opportunity to have, you know, some hearing and public comment from our community when we make these sorts of decisions. I think that also speaks to the community's desire to be, um, playing a greater role in understanding and being informed when these bigger, um, projects come into their community. And that's it for me right now.
Can I get some clarification? You had the three thresholds. Um, two hundred and fifty plus was coming to council for review. What was the one hundred plus and the one oh one to two fifty?
I think anything under, anything over a hundred units should be a land default. But there could be staff discretion for, um, projects that are a hundred and one to two hundred and fifty units. Obviously wanting land dedication to be the default, but understanding that there are occasions where land, um, staff will need to make decisions. When it gets bigger than two hundred and fifty units and a density factor, then that should come before council. So to Counselor Nystrom's earlier point, you know, these projects take time. I don't want us to be clogged with just approving land dedications every meeting. But I don't know that that cadence is gonna be a challenge right now. It, you know, it may need to be adjusted as we move forward, but, you know, that, that's a starting place to have that conversation. I thought that those numbers would be a good jumping off point, though.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cruz.
Thanks. Uh, lots to chew on. So I'm gonna save most of my opinions about what everybody else has said until we get to those specific sections. Um, but wanted to, um, just, uh, double tap on talking about affordable. Think that's important. Talking about the threshold, um, of discretion, I think is important. Although I might have some differing opinions about what the threshold should be. Um, but then I just wanted to add, um, like three other things into the conversation. One is like just being really clear in the ordinance of the timing of the application of, um, the, the kind of dedication framework, et cetera, fee in lieu. Um, because I think that that's been a point of concern in the community is at what points, um, are these things decided? Or is intervention happening? Um, two, um, I just wanted to echo that I'm really excited about the different uses being included. I know this has been a real point of feedback we've gotten in the communities in which we don't have sufficient parkland, um, you know, especially up north in, in Ward Two. And, and this is gonna be important. And I just wanted, um, make sure that we are pretty precise, um, about what some of those different uses might be. And so just wanted to bring into question like wanting to review like drainage areas um, and other things, whether those are particularly, um, uh, appropriate for, um, dedication purposes. Um, so just wanted to enter that into the conversation. Um, uh, and then, uh, also, I think I'm on board with the, our, the discussion that will be coming about, um, you know, making, clarifying that it's not maintenance. I think it's important that capital improvements are included. And I just want us to, in that discussion, kind of be thoughtful. I know a, a point of, a pain point, I would say in Ward Two is the use of some of the fee in lieu dollars on the construction of the Morse Park um, maintenance facility, which I think is great and is not like, like a, an amenity that folks in the community can really benefit from. And so that is something we've gotten quite a lot of feedback about. So I want us to be kind of thoughtful when we're talking about capital improvements about that concern. Um, and then third, um, we've just gotten a lot of confusion in the community about planning areas. Um, and that those differ from our wards and, and all of that. So, so maybe this is a question for Mr. Williams, but just wanted to, um, clarify why um, those are the specific specifications and, and how, um, we arrived at those specific planning districts.
Do I answer that one?
I, I, as far as a real clarification on the planning areas, those were established based on, uh, when the original park dedication ordinance was established, uh, Concept Lakewood was our city master plan. And Concept Lakewood split the area up into seven, seven planning areas. And so we kept those, we, we looked at several different options. The problem with, um, ward boundaries is they change over time based on population changes in there. So this was one way of keeping it static within the area of the community. Uh, they were based on the original Concept Lakewood planning areas and, uh, and that's the primary reason for it. They do, the numbers are a little backwards, uh, with wards. They're a little different. We've had a bunch of different ways of designating throughout the city. And we thought we continue using that since that's how we have had these monies collected and have, uh, track record in each of those particular areas where we can show what we've spent in those, those particular areas. But that's, that can be open i- if you want to change that. Uh, it just, it's more of a recording mechanism and besides keeping the money in that same vicinity where it came from.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Counselor Ryan.
Uh, Mr. Ross, before you disappear on us. If I could steal you back, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, excuse me, I called you Mr. Ross. My apologies. So, uh, there was a question about being able to shift money between, uh, different boundaries. And, and I understand we have to show a nexus for any money that would be spent and that, that's why we have some sort of boundaries. I wonder, would it be possible to have fewer parkland districts? So just making up a number, would it be possible to have four districts instead of seven? And would that give you more flexibility to be able to move money around where it makes sense uh, to have the most impact in some of the areas in the city that need it the most?
I- it's a possibility that can be done, just a, just a matter of practice of what I've seen over the years. Uh, where we need the parkland is where we're, we're getting development. Uh, Planning Area One, Two, and Five have collected the most fees over the years. And that's where we've spent the most to try to catch up into those particular areas. Uh, we did have one larger development in the area Three. And we, that's gonna be used towards, uh, improving the Wright Street Park, uh, that's going out to construction right now. Uh, in the areas Six and Seven, there has been very little activity. And so we, but those are also the areas where we don't necessarily need additional parkland to, uh, meet the needs. We, our hot buttons are really Planning Areas One, Two, and Five is where we really need to have the, the money spent. And that's where we're collecting it. Uh, if you look at the, the numbers per each of those planning areas, we have collected the most in those particular areas and we keep spending in those particular areas.
Okay. Well, that, that was my first comment is to consider whether or not redrawing those boundaries would be helpful to the city. If it's not, that's fine, too. Um, but this next thing is just a minor piece about the, the annual review in, uh, point seven zero C. I, I think if we just said the director shall only review and revise, um, I think that will capture that we're constantly keeping up with the amount of the fee in lieu that should be charged. And then I think if we had, uh, I think one of the commentators had mentioned if we just had an annual um, inflation adjustment so that the, the new amount shall not be less than the old amount plus the inflation amount. I think that would capture some of that. Those are more of the minor points. A, a number of folks have talked about, uh, putting together some guardrails. Um, I hadn't thought about the, uh, putting together the actual numbers like Counselor, uh, Sheriff's Eye had mentioned. Uh, my initial thought was that for the targeted areas identified in the Norris study, that there would be a presumption, uh, that the, that there should, would be a land dedication. And if there was a fee, in lieu taken, uh, instead, that that fee and lieu would be a higher amount than the, the amount that's, uh, discussed in point seven zero. Uh, and then the other piece would be at a certain size, and again, Counselor Sheriff's Eye has some numbers in, in mind, that, it's not just a presumption. You have to show exceptional, exceptional circumstances to not, uh, provide, uh, the parkland dedication. And again, if you're gonna do a fee and lieu, that there's a higher amount. I'm open to the idea whether that has to be all parkland dedication or there's some sort of hybrid, uh, piece in there. But if we're gonna do a hybrid piece, it has to be meaningful, right? It can't be like if you're supposed to dedicate five acres, I give you a quarter of an acre and they'll pay you the rest. So, some, some, some thoughts, uh, on that, aspect. It was one other, oh, my, I, I, I thought the, uh, where the money goes to if it's a fee and lieu, I thought it was pretty well spelled out in point seven zero D where it says acquisition development, and or improvement of the park. It does not leave open the idea that we use it for maintenance purposes in any way. Um, but I'm, again, I'm open to suggestions. With respect to the affordable housing, I'm assuming that the discussion on affordable housing and waiving it would be just for those, those units that are actually considered affordable housing. So, for example, if, if someone's building something where ten percent or twelve percent is going to be affordable housing, when we're doing our calculation, we're accepting out those ten percent or twelve percent that, fall within the affordable housing and then the rest would be, um, would, would still fall under our, our other rules. That's, that's my assumption. I'm not sure if I'm willing to go all the way down to sixty percent. I'm, I don't know what the implications are between sixty percent and seventy percent. Um, but, I'm sorry, sixty percent and eighty percent, but I'm certainly willing to listen to the folks who are a little more steeped in this issue. Those are my initial round of thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, thanks.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, chime in about the map and I would really, like to keep it simple and keep the map according to wards. I heard, Mr. Williams say that, you know, did it that way so it'd be solid, but, um, really this last census, the bout- ward boundaries didn't change, very much at all. And, um, I don't know twenty years ago, but every ten years with minimal adjustment. I don't think that's too much of a big change. And so it'll be, very, very helpful, I think, to keep the, um, planning districts for parkland fees aligned with the wards. That's, that's one point that I had. And then also to chime in about, um, Mayor Protem's suggestion and, and also Counselor Nystrom's suggestion that many of the directors, um, discretion, um, doesn't sit well with the citizens. And so something could be changed like, Mayor Protem suggested, or also, um, I don't know if anyone said anything about the Planning Commission, you know, approving it so that, and, and if we needed to, if they needed to pass it on to us or whatever, but, but yeah, for sure, we need to have a little bit more citizen input. And that's what the Planning Commission is and that's what we are, citizens. And so, um, yeah, let's, let's have a little bit bigger, um, a view of eyes, more eyes looking at it from, from the outset for when, when people submit the, the site plan would be, or, or later. I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Malgrado.
Uh, yes, I will keep it big picture as requested. When I was first speaking, we didn't quite have directions, so I thought we were gonna go in order of the bill or of the draft, um, rather than slaying out all of our concepts. So I've got a couple that I don't think we've quite talked about. Um, I am gonna start, I think at the bottom is the order that I know, sorry, more or less. Um, yes, okay, so the site development standards general, so fourteen dash six dash zero eight zero. I just had a question about, if any of those are like substantial changes to the current site development standards? And if so, which they are, that's a space where I don't have as much, um, expertise on things like, storm drainage facilities and curbs and gutters, but I do wanna check in about whether or not that is substantial changes.
Ross, Ross, take that.
Yeah.
And answer part of that, too. I'm looking at the red line that we had with the new overlaid with the old. And it doesn't look like that particular section, the old version is different than this new version. Ross?
That, that is correct. Yes.
Okay, great. I know that some of the questions about like slopes with ADUs and Green Mountain had come up, so I just wanted to check in on that component. Um, and then I also, working up from that, I think we're looking then in fourteen dash sixteen dash zero seven zero. Oh, no, sorry, still in zero six zero, uh, keeping it less than three acres. Uh, uh, park dedication or or land dedication. I do recognize that the problems that we have run into around maintenance of like postage stamp parks, is really critical, but I, I frankly would work pretty hard to bring that number, down quite a lot unless I can see very compelling numbers about the budget just not accounting for it. Um, in particular, as you were, as, as you were just discussing, Mr. Williams, that there is, uh, the places with the most development is also the places, uh, that do need the parks. So this districting has worked in that way. And to Counselor Nystrom's point that, there's infill happening, that we will both run out of space to densify, but we will also run out of space for parkland. And in particular, in the more urban part of Lakewood, like North, uh, Northeast Lakewood in Ward Two, but also I believe that's District One in the map, um. Really being able to walk to a patch of green space that's more like a block, size is, is incredibly impactful for a neighborhood. And so while I'm definitely cognizant of, of the maintenance costs and I don't want there to be an overbearing burden being put on the city for that, um, disqualifying parks, particularly, um, in, in these areas that are more urban, that are less than three acres, doesn't, strike me as, uh, something that quite makes sense, especially I was talking about that dog park earlier, which is one point eight acres. It's, it feels big, like it is, not, it does not feel, it is not the small park that's in Ward One that I think is still our newest park, is that right? Cause we haven't quite broken ground on two creeks. So, um, I just, I offer that because I think that that's a tremendously important thing for us to reconsider in this moment. In, in order for the dollars to really be used on what they're supposed to be used for, which is green space, um, and, and community space. And I think that it does not make sense to me that three acres is our standard of parks, given that the parks that already exist in my neighborhoods and my ward are, are not that size, actually. Like, some of them are, I recognize, but not all of them. Um, so there, so there is that. I wanna see some parkland, like the, the size of parks be more flexible. Um, next I'm looking at, uh, the best serve public interest, uh, qualification in the point zero, or, uh, sorry, fourteen point dash sixteen dash zero six zero. Uh, oh, no, sorry, that's zero seven zero. I'm not sure. It's on page five. Sorry, I'm scrolling up and down between like all the two different red lines. Um, but it's, it says something about basically the, the discretion around, uh, uh, what best serves the public interest. And I think that that is in, an okay amount of discretion, except that we might want to define. I would argue we should define, best serving public interest with some levels of intention or even just putting it in the definition components, where the purpose of this, we get, get a little bit more specific. There's some intro now around, community gatherings, sustainability of environmentalism, creating green space, breaking up density in neighborhoods, right? Like where we kind of enumerate what public interest is, so that that discretion actually has some pretty clear parameters. Because it is something where a community garden, as I think has gotten used, may be considered best public interest, um, for a lot, for a lot of good reasons. Um, but then a large, cement corridor where people can gather may not be because it's cement, um, or it might be because it's gathering, right? So I think we should just enumerate a little bit like what best public interest means. Um, if that is a component of discretion as we move forward, or even of how the city council will hear it, how we consider fee and dues, et cetera. Um, and then, uh, I would also like to see some type of language, again, I'm not sure exactly where it would fit, that really encourages without requiring, but that does encourage and enumerates that we want to be seeing, um, community gathering, amenities, play, and also the referencing, I think this component around trees, uh, like native planting. So I'm not talking zero escaping. I don't think we wanna overdo the, the water usage component where we end up with just zero escape lots. Those end up not being as soft and friendly as they can be, but encouraging lower water use, smart design, um, and native or compatible, uh, collaborative plants, um, that have, you know, symbiosis, so they can all work together. I can help think about that language, but I just wanna put that out as another component of something that we're looking for. We wanna enumerate that. Um, I also had a concern about the criteria. Yeah, I think in that same section, it's around the definitions. Um, or not in the definitions, i- in the, uh, site development and then the, um, procedure fee determination, um, and the requirement for dedications. Oh, that's it. It's, it's in the requirement for dedication. So fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero, criteria for land not eligible for park use in open space. So that is again where the three acre limit is, but then it is also, um, anywhere that has hazardous or, uh, hazardous wildfire area. And I'm wondering, given that our hazardous wildfire area is, expanding, um, and recognizing that currently that is a very specific part of our town, I don't actually, pardon me. I'm not actually sure that it, it makes sense for us to decide that we can't have parkland on, say, places nearer the foothills that might have that type of, of risk. Um, recognizing that, yes, if a park burns, that is expensive to remediate, to, to bring back, et cetera, but really using park, land that has been maintained in the way that parks are with shorter grass and more sparse trees than, say, the grasslands or the forests that naturally occur can actually be like helpful buffers in between housing and business buildings, um, and commercial buildings. So I, I don't have the expertise to, to strongly push back on this in this exact moment, but I do think that we should, consider that, um, that component there of, of why it needs to be somewhere that we do not have wildfire risk. If it's just an insurance issue, then I'm not gonna fight on that. Um, and then the, next thing that I wanna talk about, um, pardon me. Oh, I wanna double click and, and re-up the Counselor, uh, Cruz's component of really wanting to make sure that capital improvements are clear. Um, and also got pushed back about the maintenance facility being used, uh, using the parkland dollars, I think in particular because we are in an area, that so desperately wants to see new green space, that that was a, a really tough ideal. And I think that's another good reason to have a little bit of, an enumeration of our intentions to, to bring about with this ordinance. Um, and then lastly, I think on the affordable housing, which I know we're gonna dig more into, um, I wanna recognize so that basically, just for clarity, if we bring it from eighty percent down to sixty percent AMI, um, for, uh, being let, uh, for being exempted from these rules, that means it is, is less, um, it is less developments that would qualify. And I do recognize that there is pros and cons there, which is, we also wanna continue to encourage housing, but I think that when we look at all of the studies that we've seen with Jefferson County, with the Colorado Gives Dollars, with our collaborative money, which are with our local housing strategic plan, with Proposition One Twenty Three, that because the middle income, so that eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent AMI was such a focus and such a, such a place of, of, underserved folks in that range, that all of those programs and all of that dedicated money and all of those resources and all of those, regulations have all gone to encourage that component of, um, housing. And what we really see continues to lag behind is those in higher levels of need. And so I would say, perhaps to Counselor Ryan's point, if it's, we're only waiving that the, um, the park dedication or the fee, if it's only for those units that are affordable. Sure, but I would say that if it's a sixty percent or below AMI, um, at ten or fifteen percent of the units are at that aggressive of a threshold, I, that makes me comfortable saying like that whole, development can be exempted. Because I know that the way that that, those dollars add up is so different, and that that continues to be this really neglected component of housing investment, um, that essentially only fully nonprofit developers tend to reach. And so this would be a very small, um, but I think important tool to like add in the layers that we're trying to create over the next year or two, um, to encourage the development, um, like from the bottom up of, of need, because those are the spaces where, um, people are able to stay housed, who are going through the hardest time, and people are often able to like access housing for the first time when, if they're coming out of homelessness. Those are all of my things for this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have some questions that have come out of that that might be helpful. Um, I'm not sure if this is maybe for Ms. Hudson or Mr. Parker. Um, it's not clear in the text as it's written now. It just, it mentions, so to support the development of housing units set aside for households earning no more than eighty percent of area median income. So, I'm curious, do we know, was this for, um, developments that were going to be one hundred percent of that affordable definition? Or we're, we've got a couple of counselors now that have kind of peeled out saying if there's portions thereof. Do we know what the original intent was with this particular draft?
Wait, Travis, can you please answer that?
Absolutely. I, I don't know what the intent of the draft was, and right now, it's not clear. I think it would be appropriate for council to set a minimum level of, affordable units in the project. I think I heard ten percent. That's, that's a pretty, fair level, I think, to say if, if you provide ten percent at of the units at sixty percent AMI, that would give us a good standard that, that would, uh, support the, the projects that are providing a reasonable number of affordable units.
Okay, thank you. So we'll come back to that. Secondly, um, also a couple of counselors have mentioned the idea of, fee and lieu, the fee being different for different, developments, um, locations, that kind of thing. Maybe this question is for legal. Can we do different charges or does it need to be consistent throughout the city?
Oh, Lauren. Yeah, thanks, Lauren.
Hi, everyone. So, um, I, I wanna start, I, I heard that discussion and something we do have to be cognizant of. If we're going to be charging, you know, having some sort of scale or graduated fees, we do have to be cognizant that what we're doing is, uh, we're not creating some sort of desperate treatment. So if, if a developer, let's say, is, um, developing a larger parcel of land or, they are in maybe an area of the city that is in greater need of parkland, we could potentially run into some issues if we have some type of, um, you know, increased step up fee or increased dedication requirement, because we can't, we, we need to be able to be tr- to treat everyone, um, basically the same, as, as they're situated. And I know this isn't that articulate, but we have to also ensure that when we look at those, As as they're situated. And I know this isn't that articulate, but we have to also ensure that when we look at those tests for exactions. That we are, we have the nexus, it's in rough proportionality to the development. And say a developer is going to build two hundred units in um, let's say I'll use the map here in. District one, which is in great need of parkland. And then another developer is going to build two hundred units in. District six, which is not in as need of as as great of parkland. If we're going to be charging the developer in district one twenty-five percent more. That that could potentially be a problem and we could face, you know. The risk of litigation or something like that. If the developer were to say, I am doing the exact same project as this developer. I don't know why I'm being charged these additional fees. So I I am nervous about the suggestion that we do any type of. Graduated or scaled fee based on size of project or based on the area. Um, I think that would be difficult to to ensure that that was legally supportable and that we have the correct. Metrics in place.
Are there other possible incentives that could be maybe? Provided to those developers that are building in the higher need districts? And or, you know, especially, you know, there are some, I think there's an appetite for some of our councils to counselors to. Accept. Property that is staying private within a development, but that is open for public access. Is that maybe another avenue that could be used?
Yeah, certainly. So I mean, as as long as we're applying this more broadly, you know, across the city. We, some of you have already called out that there is an opportunity to develop sort of alternate um park and open space. You know, sites, this, we've talked about plazas, we've talked about other kind of common areas. So that is something that, you know, we can, we can certainly have the option. We would just have to, again, apply it more broadly, but that's certainly something a developer. You know, can take advantage of if they decide they don't want to do. The fee or they want to do some type of other space on site. That would be available to them.
Okay, thank you. And then reminder for council, we've got um, we're we're up here tonight and. This will be three hearings. So. Monday will be a second hearing. We will have the, not only we will have public hearing. But we will have the ability to make amendments. So we don't have to get every single thing decided. Um, tonight, like we want to get as much as possible, but some of the minutia, like the sixty versus the eighty percent. That is definitely something that we don't have to land on tonight. That can be something that we all research and come back to the conversation on Monday. Um, feeling a little bit more ready to make that decision. Um, Counselor Nystrom.
Okay, thank you. Um, could I just, Lauren, could I just ask a follow-up question? This is probably just me. Being a little congested this evening, but from the example that you gave. Um, I I think, did I miss this? Or if you're saying somebody's building. A development in district six. And another one is being built in district two, but we want to give them credit because they're. Uh, building. Affordable housing is included in that development that. If the the person building in district six is not including affordable units. They still have a reason to protest or feel slighted?
No, so my example was um likening two developers in the same situation. So mine was not. Uh, not about affordable housing. It was saying there's a developer in in the planning district one, building two hundred units. There's another developer. Building two hundred units in district six. So just for purposes of this hypothetical, they're the exact same. And I was just discussing um. We can't, we cannot have a situation where we are treating these developments differently and we're requiring increased fees or increased. Um, dedication or exactions for one and not the other. So mine did, my example was not, did not have any affordable component. It was just um. You know, apples to apples.
Okay, but do you think if there was a difference? So one unit, uh, one development had affordable units and one did not. Is that, is that something that gives us any latitude?
Yes. So what you've all described tonight and what Mr. Parker laid out earlier. If there was um, if if council decided as a body to set some sort of um percentage, you know, whatever the area media income percentage was and then. Set some sort of amount, you know, maybe a minimum threshold of if you have ten percent of the units as affordable. That's where um there could be some discretion to, you know, either. Waive all or a portion of the dedication requirement and what that looks like if there was an affordable component. That's something that council could do.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um. Okay, so uh just a couple. Other items. Um, I think to Counselor. Ryan's point, um. Uh, I I believe when we had the study session back in April, we did ask for like an annual report out on. The 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 fee and lieu amount. Um, because I think there was a pretty significant lapse from the last time it was reviewed until that session. And then we agreed upon raising that. I would just suggest that. Annually as one of the updates or something, doesn't have to be a big presentation. Could probably even be an email and then discuss later, but. That, you know, we just have a a report out saying the fee and lieu was reviewed and it wasn't changed or. Whatever the status is. Um, and I and I completely agree with Counselor Maya Carrero's comments about. Smaller parks, like I I think three acres is too much and and we have an opportunity again to. To just give people a place to get outside and walk around or something and that. That could very be very low maintenance if it's zero escaped. Um, and. You know, or whatever the configuration is, we can make it low water, low maintenance. At the same time, but I but I do think we're going to be missing an opportunity if we're. Limiting it to three acres. And then I guess, you know, ki- kind of going back to the um. The review of the decision on the parkland dedication um and the discretion piece. Um, you know, we, we could undoubtedly set some parameters for that. But I would prefer that, especially since the whole premise for this ordinance is based on density and adding population. That it be based on um adding a hundred people versus adding a hundred units. There there's quite a big difference there. So um, I just want to get that on the record. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. And I know you'll lead us through these uh different issues, but I I am heartened that I'm hearing a lot of. Things that sounds like we are agreeable on uh or agree on. One of the areas uh in point seven zero B. And I really hadn't looked at this until uh Counselor May Carrero. Uh, was directing our attention to this general area. One of the things I missed and I'd be curious to hear more about. Says the director may also accept improvements of equal or greater value. Uh, to the fee and lieu. And and I know that much of that language is the same as the old ordinance. But I actually don't know what that means. What kind of improvements may accept improvements of equal or greater value? Uh, to the fee and lieu. That that's a question for staff.
Yeah, that would go to Ross.
Sorry, Ross.
Uh, no problem. Uh, just get back here. Um, where we where we find that trying to estimate. When they're in a construction phase or anything like that, uh. It's very difficult to estimate the cost of doing improvements such as a playground. Um, where we have accepted improvements in lieu of is uh, we've gotten a dedication of land along a uh, along light rail line. For a trail and then they also were, we've got them to do the improvements on the trail. And the cost of that trail probably costs a lot more than their dedication or fee in lieu of dedication requirement was. We have several examples throughout the city where we have done something like that. Uh, but we're looking at, trying to find, making sure that we get the full value of what we're due. And we don't want to underestimate that. And it's it's very difficult when you're a year out from construction and getting, when the thing is going. The last five years has been hell trying to figure out what construction costs have been, are going to be out there.
So I guess I would just ask for some clarifying language around the word improvements, because obviously in the real estate context, improvements have a very specific meaning. And there could be something completely unrelated to what we're talking about uh tonight. And so to the extent we can provide some clarity there. And then the other thing is, um, you know, perhaps I'm just. Mishearing uh some things as to where we're at. To the extent legal can direct us or give us some guidance as to what kind of discretion that we can. Or what kind of guardrails we can build around projects. So the idea of the. Of saying to staff, hey, there's some things we want you to have less discretion on. And what that flexibility looks or doesn't look like. Um, to the extent it doesn't have to be tonight, we can get a little bit of clarity as to what we, what kind of. Things that we could put around that, whether it's the size, whether it's target areas. Uh, or something completely different. I I would certainly appreciate that uh guidance moving forward.
Councilmember Ryan, we're taking notes like crazy and we will have some written responses. To the city council toward the end of the week and I'm hoping to have general ideas about guy guardrails. Making sure that everybody understands the scope of exactions dedications requires that we serve the needs of people. Who will be going into new developments. So parkland dedication isn't intended to. Meet the existing needs. We use general fund to meet existing needs. This is about meeting the needs of new people. So we need to make sure that the guardrails uh reflect that. So we'll put something together for you at a later date.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I had.
So Ms. McKinney Brown, in response to that, do we? Want to, you guys work on your part before we actually get into specifics like directing you on. Staff discretion? Shall we not go into that conversation tonight between us? Wait to hear from you and then we do it? Or is it?
Any information that the city council gives us this evening is information we can take and run with. So if if you want to have that discussion, we will continue to take notes and be ready to give you more to work with next Monday.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Counselor Lo.
Yeah, um. Could I just um maybe have a have a a follow-up dialogue with with Ms. Danek and um. And Ms. Brown on on the. Lauren, the the point you made uh a a moment ago. So if the argument is I understood it is. Having a higher fee and lieu for certain parts of the city. Could could render it, could open us up to to um lawsuit or or litigation because we basically have a disparate treatment. Could I just ask a kind of a fundamental question? Why is that? Uh, I mean, my my understanding of thirteen thirteen is there's a requirement that we have a fee and lieu. And so that we we need to have a fee and lieu. And my under- my further understanding from all the conversations we've had is there's got to be a rational nexus between what the fee and lieu is and the parkland need. But but it would seem to me, and please. Educate me, educate us on this. It would seem to me we'd have a pretty strong case if we said, well. There are certain parts of the city that have less parkland and our our staff and our consultants have established that. And so there's a higher need for parkland. And so consequently, we're setting a higher fee and lieu for those areas precisely because we want more parkland. Or more privately. Operated, you know, alternate, open space that's an alternative to parkland. Why, why doesn't the city have have the discretion to say that?
So, and I think you you've captured the um basically the exactions test, the the nexus, the rough proportionality. The legitimate state interest is what they call it. Where, what um, what we were just discussing, which also is the biggest factor when considering exactions. Exactions law is that these exactions are going to be um, as Ms. McKee Brown put it, for anyone, any new or increased. Density and basically that effect on the community. It's. We get into a bit of a slippery slope. Again, if we're look looking at that example I used with a hypothetical where we have, you know, two hundred units, two hundred units. And we're trying to say that. Yes, we need more parkland in this park district. The impact is going to therefore be. Higher, even though we have the same number of of added, added density or added persons to that area. We get into a really difficult place where we're trying to say that impact is going to be greater in parkland district one than it is in parkland district six. Where we have to be able to articulate pretty clearly. Not only the nexus and the rough proportionality, but also. This increased fee is because this is how much this density is going to affect, you know, affect the community in this area. And. There are concerns where if we start to target those areas as you described. Or we start to treat these developments very differently. First, there's always the concern. That, you know, even with our our best attempts, that we are not, you know, um. That we are not calculating the fees, you know, exactly precise, because there may be, for instance, as Mr. Williams mentioned. There are potentially always acquisitions in the pipeline, which could could dramatically affect. The parkland per person, you know, those neighborhood and community parks. So there's always other things too. There could be a year where there are a ton of acquisitions. In parkland district one, but we have charged uh developers in that parkland district twenty-five percent more than in any other given district. And so there isn't. That rough proportionality at that point. So it's not just because we want it to be easier to administer. We just, we want it to be lawful. We want to be able to say. Yes, we're administering this correctly. We are just charging exactly what it costs. You know, per acre for this type of of density for this development. If we can, if we can stick to those kinds of numbers and we are uniform across the board, then we're just, we situate ourselves better. Um, if we are, if we do face a challenge in the future from someone who suggests. This was not proportionate. I was charged extra. My, the impact of my project is not. A significant as anyone else's or more significant, I should say. Um. So that's, that's. That's part of the analysis.
But, I mean. I I think I hear you. Couldn't we at least partly, mostly, entirely address that by by tethering the the fee and lieu? More precisely to a sort of a a staff analysis of parkland shortage? So what what if we took the. Literally the sort of the heat map, heat map that's in the the Norris study. We said, the Director of Community Resources will basically take this map. And will be responsible for updating it every. Three years, every four years, whatever. And any. We we'd have to figure out the the geographic area, but within any any given. Area of the city where there's a a a park shortage found based on this. There shall be, you know, the the fee and lieu shall be X percent higher depending on. The acuity of the shortage and we could, we could define that. I mean, they would take a little bit of. Of of wordsmithing. So you you could, you could establish a a sort of a going forward direct basis. So that the the higher fee and lieu would be directly tethered to parkland shortage. Yeah.
Just to jump in here, I think Lauren did a great job of explaining some of the parameters we're working with. But you're giving us some innovative ideas. We haven't had an opportunity to fully. To fully work through. So what I like to do again is just. Well, I've taken really good notes on what you've said. And get a response back to you a little later this week about how it might be possible to get at least close to what it is you're asking. Uh, because the goal is. To try to meet the needs of the city council, what the city council wants. So. Within the parameters that we're working. Let let's, let's take a few days and figure out how to get there.
That sounds great to me. And I feel, it's not just the legal question, obviously. There there are very real policy trade-offs to having a. A fee and lieu increase in certain parts of the city. So I mean, there's both. And I think Ms. Danek has done a good job of teeing up like some of the legal complications of this too. So. I get that this is like a thorny one. Um, that sounds great to me. I I happy to talk about this more and. Would just love to have this be on our our growing list of. Of possible amendments to consider over the next few weeks.
Okay, we're going to um hear from Counselor Cruz. And then what I'd like to do. I've got a list of about twelve items so far. We'll see if we can't start landing the plane on some of those to get some staff direction. So um, we have things to work on learning. Uh, this week before we move forward to uh revisiting this next Monday. So um, Counselor Cruz, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, this is following a little bit of the train. Um, so. I I hear and I'm excited to to learn more kind of about how we can be creative about the fee and lieu piece. My my question, I guess, potentially for Ms. Danek and and Ms. McKinney Brown is, would. Like, giving less staff discretion around taking fee and lieu. giving less staff discretion around taking fee in lieu have the same challenge rather than applying disparate fees? Or, or would it be more acceptable since it's like the same standard, but they're just, they have, might have, somebody could have less discretion in an area where there's an identified park shortage? Or does that run into the same issue?
So there are similar issues. We'll, we'll certainly look at that as well. But one thing council does have discretion to do generally, so across the board, is to determine at what levels the staff should have discretion to make those determinations and at what levels the body may want Planning Commission or City Council to make certain determinations, whether that's based on, like we discussed earlier, unit size, whether that's based on land dedication size, whether that's, you know, so that is something that this body could, could decide. If there were certain thresholds where you all preferred to have it go through a public hearing process versus allowing staff to have discretion.
Okay, that's helpful. And, and maybe too, in hearing more about how you all chew on, to me, I think like, the, the goal of, of what I hear Counselor Lo saying seems to be to like encourage the dedicate, the acceptance of dedication rather than a fee in lieu in specific areas. And so whatever kind of creative policy ideas or legal parameters you all set forth, I'm curious to hear. So thank you.
Okay. So I would like to open up the conversation around specificity of spending, which actually I think I've got it kind of written down in two different ways, so two different points here. Counsel LeBure had originally brought it up. But then we also, I would loop that under, and someone correct me if I'm not thinking about this correctly, but also the fee in lieu of acquisition versus investment, capital improvements, maintenance, things like that. Counsel LeBure, when you were thinking, when you mentioned specificity of spending, was it in alignment with like how those funds, and whether it was acquisition or broadening it out?
Yeah, I was just trying to speak to, you know, be more clear about, yeah, what the purchases are for. And specifically, and maybe even making it clear that it's not for staff costs or operational costs, but really around capital or, or land improvements.
Okay. So it sounds like we, and we had a few counselors that noted that particular thing. And it sounds like we may have a consensus landing on funds being used for acquisition or capital improvements, investments, and then just excluding maintenance. Does that capture, does everybody want to exclude maintenance? Can we get consensus on that? Do people want to exclude maintenance?
I just, I, maybe it could be 50% of the funds have to, are excluded from maintenance or something like that. You could set a threshold on it. But yes, I'm, I'm for the concept in general.
Okay. So Ms. Hudson, can you walk us through?
I'm not.
How much complexity you're not, we can or cannot overlay on how we're, because you guys also have the Tabor dollars, we have the district dollars. Like, I want to be really thoughtful in how we're actually doing this. To me, it seems like it would be easier if we just, maintenance was done by something else. But I don't know the mechanics behind the finances here.
I would, I think Counselor Ryan already addressed this. If you look at page six, so it's 14-16-070, D, and read D, it pretty much specifies acquisition, development, and/or improvement of park and open space. So it doesn't, it doesn't list maintenance. If you want a different language there, it's set up pretty nicely.
Okay. So then the agreement would be, do we like 14-16-070D as stated? D is in David.
Or do you want to modify it?
Counselor Ryan, you have your hand up, then Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Yeah, if I remember our last study session correctly, we were told that we may have legal difficulties using fee in lieu money on maintenance. And, and so the idea was, as was pointed out even just tonight, that the idea is, if you're going to be building more units, you need more parkland, that whole idea, the money needs to go towards that, things that relate to that and not to maintenance. That was my takeaway from our last study session is that we really couldn't use the money for maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
That was also my understanding of that study session. If we are not sure if that is true, I, I am potentially aligned with putting limits on it. But I, one of the issues with getting amenities in parks that exist in already dense parts of the city is that their usage is also dense. And so like, the amount of maintenance per acreage should be higher in this part of town than it is in other parts of town for other parks. Like, the ability for us to keep bathrooms open in parks near Colfax requires staffing. And that has been why those things have been closed. And then it's taking that amenity away from everyone who uses the park. Additionally, we see like just a, a high amount of like trash or other types of, you know, erosion and lack of vegetation and those kinds of problems from just having high traffic. And so, again, if that is a legal issue, I will get on board. But I would actually specifically say that as long as the money is having to stay where it is, as flexible as possible, I will re-up my point that I made in that same section, that the best, about the best possible public interest, I believe is the phrase. Yeah, best serve the public interest, sorry. In accordance with this code, if the director determines, et cetera, et cetera, that this would not best serve the public interest or purpose of this code, and I would, I would say that we should get a little more specific with what, with what that means, no matter what we're using the dollars for.
Can you cite that?
Yes. So that is in 14-16-070 subsection B, which I believe is where we were looking?
Thank you.
Oh, I guess maybe we were looking in D. So we're at B. And that talks about it being able to be like improvement instead of parkland, and specifically refers to the best interest component.
Right. Thank you.
Did you have more, Counselor Matt Guerrero?
Okay, Counselor Lo.
Yeah, on this, I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm a little torn on this one. I, I think, I think this is an important issue in, in the discussion. Like, on the one hand, I think there's a very good argument that the way it's worded in D, acquisition, development, and improvement is perfect. I think there will be some in the community that say, well, there's a very big difference between acquisition, which is about creating new open space, and improvement, which is about improvements in existing open space. So a possible amendment we might consider is to say designated for acquisition, development, and improvement, and, I'm just going to throw a number out, and 50% of the funds must go to acquisition. That's, I mean, that's something we could consider. I would be interested in sort of staff's input on like workability and, and what's realistic in terms of, like, if we wanted to sort of set aside a specific benchmark for acquisition specifically, like whether that's advisable and whether that's feasible. But I suspect there are some, that, that would be one amendment we could make that would perhaps be, be an effort toward trying to make sure that we really do have a, a minimum amount of open space that's generated from these funds.
One thing to remember is, we do also have, you know, we've now extended the ability to retain tax revenue specifically for acquisition as well. And Mr. Williams had brought up the point earlier that flowing in of the fees is not always enough. Like, these parks, I don't, it's been a while since we've voted on new parks, but most of them were, I want to say, I remember 3 million, I remember 6 million. I feel like they were all kind of maybe between 1 or 2, and I think the 6th was the highest one. So I could see where these fees would be challenging to get to via number that we would need for acquisition, but we could maybe augment that for acquisition. I would hate to see the money that could be used to improve a park not be used because it's set aside with the earmark that it can only be used for acquisition when we've also got Tabor funds can be utilized that way. My challenge there. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. To this effect, I'm curious, I know we've received the list of what things have been spent in these categories. But my impression was that the majority of the funds, at least in the planning districts, I have been looked at, have been used in acquisition. And so if we could, maybe that's a question we can get our hands on between now and Monday to understand what the reality has been and how this ordinance can either affirm or improve upon the reality based on what we're hearing from folks. And so I don't, I have feelings, I feel kind of conflicted on this specific argument. I don't know if I can get to consensus. Oh, yeah, Ms. Hudson, if you have.
Sure, sure. We can circulate that list for you in, I'm, I'm guessing the next day or two. It shouldn't be tough.
Great. And do you think it'll be clear for us, like for, because I know I've seen the list before, and like, I could, I could like guess what was an acquisition versus like an improvement in a park. But could that potentially be just like delineated so that we understand for the purposes of this conversation?
I, I don't see why not. Ross, do you have a different answer? I'm committing you right now, Ross.
We can figure out something, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thanks, Lauren. Great. And then I think to the, to the point about maintenance, if we do get an answer that it is legally practicable to use for maintenance, I think, yeah, particularly for, for smaller parks or more areas that might be more expensive to maintain. I just wanted to kind of second Counselor Matt Guerrero's point on that, because I know that's been a big point of pushback for adding new open space in our back of the woods. I would also say, if it's not legally practicable, I could see if there's concern in the community about the use towards maintenance dollars, and it's something we can't do anyway. I could support adding like nothing in this indicates that these funds will be used for maintenance. That doesn't do anything for harm and might help people read the ordinance. So if that is the path forward, I would be fine with that language if there's nothing else we can do. And then also, I might be interested in adding after park and open space land on that line for the purposes of recreation, or, or something like that, just to ensure that the acquisitions we're making are for, for parks and for recreational purposes for people in those planning districts. So just wanted to throw that out there as something that I might be interested in.
So you're looking at, we're still looking at 14-16-070, letter D is in David. You're proposing Counselor Cruz to add, in addition to improvement, park and open space land and recreation?
I'd say like for recreational purposes. I'm open to like the word smithing on that. But the intent is that the funds, if it's going to be used for acquisition or capital improvements of facility, that it should be for, for recreation and for, for things that the public is going to enjoy.
Okay. Do we have consensus on adding that verbiage into there? We have, we're getting slow responses, so bear with me just a sec. Okay. Everybody hold up what you, what you feel. Okay. I think, Pollak, can you, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I basically agree, but I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on some of the details. And maybe this is something we can revisit.
Okay. Yeah, I think we saw, I saw a number of yeses. So for the time being, Allison McKinney Brown, did you, you got that, adding recreational uses, something to that effect on D? Okay, perfect. All right. So we're going to move away from that topic. Let's talk for a minute about staff discretion. And to Ms. McKinney Brown's comment earlier, we, we can get more about that throughout the week. But I, I feel like we need to have a little bit more clarity on something to at least start them on their path of, of discretion. So, and we had a number of counselors that were interested in adding some kind of guardrails to staff discretion. Were there other, Mayor Per Tom Sharazai had brought hers forward some specifics there. Did anybody have any specific thoughts on yes and or no, where we do not want discretion? Counselor Ryan?
I think like I mentioned, I'm, I'm open to either Counselor Sharazai's proposal, or, you know, I was really looking at the idea that, my thought is, the reason that the city pays for these studies is so that when it tries to come up with policy that's justified. And so that's why I was looking at the targeted areas. And so that's why I mentioned maybe the targeted areas, but certainly size. And if, but I, I do think we need to have some sort of guardrails. And that, those were the two ways that I was thinking of them tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Per Tom, can you give us your specifics? And maybe we just start there.
Yeah, mine's.
I know you already said it once.
My starting point would be land default over, this is, this is for multifamily. So land default over 100 units or more. But then staff discretion available to be applied to 101 to 250 units. And then city council's intervention and determination at, if they're asking for a fee in lieu at 250 and above.
Can I ask, I'm a little confused on, I would think we would want land default to be on the larger project instead of the smaller ones? Where maybe it would be the up, go ahead.
Land default is, is it, I'm just, there would still be an opportunity to have a fee in lieu, but the land default would still be the, the preference. There could be deter, like, they could make a case of why they need fees in lieu. And then, and here are the different buckets that would allow for staff discretion and then city council's intervention. Intervention may be the wrong verb, but you understand what I mean.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I have a question about what happens below 100 units. I think, I, overall, I really like that approach. And I think that if, that's probably enough direction for staff to like work up something that then we can react to or amend, something that I will continue to think about. And I'd be curious if folks have thoughts, is around the, the slightly smaller than that, because I, I don't think that we want to necessarily say that anything under 100 units just like isn't within this. So that is something I was going to bring up anyways, like the scaling of like how small and how large this whole program starts at, ends at, et cetera. So I think when we're thinking about that, those sound about right. But that under 100 unit, I think it's really complicated. So we want to put that out as a place where we, where we will need to continue discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Lo.
One, one other clarification for, for Counselor Sharazai on the intent. If a project didn't do a parkland dedication, but was setting aside land under Uh, didn't do a parkland dedication but was setting aside land under. Under the, the, the new verbiage that allows for, for basically for privately held, for privately maintained land. The sort of the, the community gardens, the community pauses that we've been talking about. Would that exempt it from city council review? In other words, it wasn't dedicating public parkland. But it had a privately maintained community garden that satisfied the requirement, I, my, my assumption is then you wouldn't, it would not require city council review.
Right, because I think we, in, in the ordinance from which we're working upon. Those parkland, the land dedication would be met with some of these more creative approaches to us. Do you think that that, those thresholds may not, uh, trigger additional review if they are. Thoughtfully implementing some of the other paths to open space and how we convene as community.
Right, that makes sense, and then just one other, one clarification, I think maybe we were kind of already talking about. So ju- just to be clear, for, for multifamily development of more than two hundred and fifty units, un- under your proposal would have to go to city council. A hundred to two hundred and fifty units, staff would have discretion over fee and lieu. And then, under a hundred units, staff would also have discretion for fee and lieu, right?
I think we could encourage, like, let's think creatively about it, but. So I'm looking at, and this is something that we all saw from the folks in Miller Heights, so I'm using this as the foundation for this, but. You know, these are community members and my stakeholding that we have all heard about, I've heard from them for many years and their, and their thoughtfulness as they prepare for Westland. Um, this group of activists are recommending that fees are the default on all projects less than one hundred, and I would advocate for that as well.
That fees are the, in other words, just, we, we just have a fee in lieu, period, for, for any project that, that we not mess around with.
Like if, you know, if folks want to implement some, if, obviously, we would always take parkland dedication, but once we get to those smaller scale. Projects, you know, I know that we are still talking about whether three acres is the threshold, but. I do think that this would, uh, generate some creativity there, that we, for the smaller sized multifamilies. If we were a little bit more broad in what we were considering. Um, you know, like the plaza, the dog parks, all of those things.
Yeah, um, no, I, yeah, th- th- thanks for the clarifications, I guess I would also advocate for any, you know. Any project that has at least ten percent affordable. Um, would be exempted from city council review, even if it was more than two hundred and fifty units would be my suggestion, so there's kind of a nexus between the affordable housing. Clause and the, and the city council review clause, I am just, I, I, I think there's a lot of arguments for doing this, I also am just going to name like. That, that this does create like a meaningful road, roadblock for, for larger projects in general. And, you know, there is the possibility that down the road, we're going to have a council that. Is less, is, is, is just more generally obstructionist. And that could be bad if, if any project above two hundred and fifty units, um, has to come in front of councils, so it, it. There, there are some real policy trade offs on this one, in my opinion.
Sure.
Councilor Nystrom.
I, I, I get where you're going with that, Councilor Low, and, and I appreciate that, but I, but I also think like, we need to be cognizant of the fact. Depending on the, what's being built or whatever. Just because they're affordable units doesn't mean we should be putting up concrete around concrete, um, that's what I'm concerned about with carving this out. So I guess maybe, once we see some examples from staff, it might help clarify it for me a little bit. But, I, I want to reiterate my earlier point, I, this, the premise for this. Ordinance was based on density and increasing population, and to me, we should be talking about. One hundred people versus one hundred units, there's a big difference there, and. Um, you know, I realize. Uh, that presents some concerns about administrative process and timing, but, um. We, we can't let this become unwieldy again, and we need to be able to. Um, clearly delineate that the right things are being done at the right time in terms of parkland and. Or access to parkland and that type of thing. So, I don't know if I'm making sense, I'm not really there, sorry.
Yeah, we got you, thank you, Councilor Cruz.
Thanks, um, one question before I give reaction. Um, can I learn a little bit more about, um, why like a per unit versus like a per acreage? Um, which I know is I think what the old por- parkland dedication ordinance used to do. Just curious from Councilor Share's.
Sorry, um, can, I was rereading that, can you ask your question again?
Sorry, I, I'm just curious, um, the, about like the number of unit versus like acreage conversation. I'm like, why per unit rather than like a large acreage like it used to be?
Ross or Amber, can you talk about that, that shift?
Uh, wait, pardon me, I, I missed the question because we were discussing some of that, uh. Could you ask the question again, let me make sure.
You know, you're totally fine, and, and maybe you all would have this, this is honestly really for Mayor Protim with just the legislative intent of the ordinance. Um, like facing review off of a number of units route, or like discretion around fees and lieu, because I. My understanding was prior to this new ordinance, it was, there was a, an acreage at which you, there was less discretion.
Yeah, fees was the default on fifteen acres, that's. So they were never gonna, like, there was always going to be staff discretion, huh? I think for me, like, when you hear, I mean, Councilor Nystrom said this a dozen times tonight, like, this is about density, it's about humans moving in. So, if we were talking about parkland, it seems like we're sort of shifting into a density factor as part of the conversation, so. Then this allows for and it adjusts that calculation too, where it was previously. You know, one point five residents per unit, that would be adjusted, I think it's being suggested at one point six eight, so. It does adjust for the density factor that seems to be the catalyst for. Um, some of the community, um, response to this. As opposed to, um, what we had originally thought, where it was about just open space, like, there is a density. Of humans that we need to be considering as well, or I think there's going to be a level of dissatisfaction. Um, from some of the organizers.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, um, I think I have to noodle on it a little bit because. Like against, I guess the concern I have about just, just number of units and not acreage is that. Like particularly in transit oriented corridors, what we're trying to encourage is diversity, or, or diversity, actually, yes, but also density. Right, um, and so I'm, I'm concerned about adding additional barriers, particularly in transit oriented. Corridors where there might be small plots of land that we're trying to add more density to, and so the point is to have more units. Um, so, so I don't have like a proposal on that right now, I'm just reacting to this, but. That's a concern I have with this particular approach, although. I think I'm seeing the logic behind it and starting to parse through it, so I just want to name that. Um, particular concern with the numbers that are being thrown out.
And, Mayor, may I just respond to that, like, I would, I'm proposing, proposing this. Because there seemed to be a willingness to think expansively about how we're, like, how we're defining what is acceptable. Uh, for dedication, so that allows those more transit, uh, focused corridor developments that will be denser. To have, um, a little latitude in how they are meeting that requirement of how community. Um, uses spaces and moves around, if we were talking, um, just about traditional parks as. As maybe is being, but more defined in the, the current ordinance in which we live in, like, this would be a harder thing, I think, to accept, so. Those things would have to be paired together for me.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, and I'm on the same page with you, I, I still think that, like. I'm not totally sold on that, the, that has to be solved within every single development, because I'm thinking about like. A Tenth and Sheridan where a proposal of that is like. Um, like multi, like mixed use retail space, right, which is not parkland dedication. But that is something that the community is asking for and needs, and like. Adding, requiring them to make a plaza would be in direct conflict with a different plan, and so, so those. Again, I'm not totally, I haven't formulated this, but I just wanted to flag that as like something that I'm going to be noodling on and. A concern that I have with this proposal, although I, I, I agree and think that. The expanded usage is going to be awesome for achieving the majority of the goals that we share.
Councilor Matt Guerrero.
I was building on the same notion, and I do think that there is something, I would really encourage us to look at like a. Uh, s- some type of mix or equation on like acreage and units. Or maybe it even has to do with like what zone it's in for which of those makes more sense, because I think, one. I, I also don't actually want to fully exclude like larger. Single family or like town home, lower density developments that are, that are like of scale, right? Um, I think this idea that like one house going in or an ADU, like, I don't. That is, that is not the purpose here, but I do think, as rare as it may be, um. That like, that is the type of development what we do still want to see. Dedication or fee, and then additionally. If essentially somewhere like Tenth and Sheridan, where it really makes sense to have that density, but then adding. A few more apartments on the exact same amount of acreage is what like pushes them over that threshold, and so then they don't add. The fact that more apartments, that's also a problem, like, I want to be structuring this in a way where. Actually, if you're fitting in, in a place where it is appropriate, if you are fitting a high amount of units in a small space. That that is actually like a benefit, like you want to be penalized less for that, um, while. Recognizing that I wouldn't want to exempt that kind of development from the fee or from, or from parkland or from community space. But that's just like, to me, really like tricky, and so I also don't have a solution yet, I will learn about things between now and next Monday. Um, but, but I do think like, like, I don't know if it's about zoning or even like. Regions or what have you, but there is something there, where there, I think there's like some level of threshold around the acres that's being taken up. Um, and the, um, like unit density that we want to encourage in some parts of our city, that is, uh. That we're on the right track for, but doesn't, I don't think we've like quite figured out how to rebalance that. If I could just direct everyone to page thirty-two, appendix C, because there's a great chart. That has the people per unit, acres per unit, et cetera, so. That'll help.
One thing I'm wondering, uh, question for, uh, I'm not sure, Ms. Danic or Ms. McKinney Brown. Um, you know, the term transit oriented development has become quite popular in our state over the last couple of years. And I'm wondering if there might be, is there like a formal legal definition for transit oriented development? And could that potentially be a way where we're saying? Here's limits of discretion outside of transit oriented development areas, and here's what, um, that may be different if it's within that.
Yes, so the, um, the new law that you're all describing was, uh, previously was, it was. Passed last year and signed into law was the Transit Oriented Communities, uh, Bill. And short, TOC for short, there are definitions specifically for. What that applies to, because, um, as you all know, Lakewood is in, it does have. This bill applies to us, we're in metro area and we have, uh, certain amount of transit that qualifies, so we could, if. Council wishes to exempt, um, certain areas of the city, we could specifically use that terminology. If you all felt that was appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ryan.
Sorry, took me a moment to get off the, uh, unmute, so. There's a couple of things, uh, one with, if we're just looking at basing it on the number of, number of units or. Pop- population, however we're doing it. I, I'm okay with giving discretion to, uh, to, to our professionals at some level. I would not want to make it presum, make the presumption that it's a fee in lieu at any point in time, though. And there's a couple of reasons for that, uh, one of them is. You know, we're, we're talking about trails, for example, is one of the, one of the pieces, the, the amount, the amount, uh. Of dedication may be rel- relatively small, but we may lose a golden opportunity to connect some trails that. That, uh, uh, on a Mr. Ross, but Mr. Williams has been so, working so hard over many years to try and put together. I, I, I think I would rather give staff the discretion for some of the smaller, smaller ones. And put the more, I'm more inclined to put guardrails on some of the larger pieces. The other part on this discussion about population versus acreage, if we read the very beginning of this. Of all the iterations of the, of the parkland dedication ordinance. The whole justification is based on population, and so if we start going off on acreage, I think we start losing. The connection that we have to the very purpose of the justification of why we get to ask developers to de- dedicate land in the first place. But I think we lose that nexus, um, that Ms. Danic, uh, so articulately. Uh, explained to us, and so I'd be concerned about moving off of descriptions of, of basing everything. On population.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, so on the topic of staff discretion. Do we have consensus of using Mayor Protim Sharazai's proposed? Um, thresholds for staff discretion? Let me stop there, do we, is everybody on board with at least having that as a starting point? Councilor Low.
Sorry, I, I, you know, I'm, on this one, I'm, I'm totally okay with, with instructing staff to draft an amendment like this. Uh, I mean, I, I do think, just thinking this through over the last hour, like. The, we are at, at real risk if we create these thresholds of, of in practice in the real world, like really deterring. The development of, of any project that's above the threshold that we set. Because there, there may just be some parts of the city where it's simply not workable or feasible to. Like, there, there may be certain projects that, that just can't realistically clear those thresholds. Um, and so we may, we may be really chilling the, the, the ability to, to bring. Larger residential projects online, so I mean, thi- thi- this is a very consequential decision. I think, I think we need to stakehold this more over the next week before we have like a council consensus on whether we're actually going to pass this, is what I would suggest.
Well, and let's remember, we're not passing anything tonight, we're just giving staff a starting point and ourselves a starting point to do that stakeholder. So that'll be, that's important, but we do, I, you know, the other idea is what other potential, you know, as brought up by our. Two Ward Two councilors, there are some concerns that really relate to their wards specifically that are very valid in. This being a restriction, that I think that we also need to entertain the idea of. Maybe there are some carve outs that we want to entertain as well, so, um. Councilor Nystrom, I'll get to your question in just a second, Ms. McKinney Brown, do you, do you guys feel like? Is there much more clarity that we need to give you, or is there a way, a path forward, kind of like you did with the acquisition and maintenance topic? Where you guys can just take what we've talked about so far and craft something?
I think we're at a point where you've given us, uh, a lot of information and we can certainly craft something. A- and keep in mind, we craft something as a starting place for you to work from, um, when you get back together next Monday night. If we can get that to you sooner to give you more time to think about it, we will absolutely try.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Councilor Nystrom.
Thank you, um, I, I just, I don't want to get into analysis paralysis, right, like, part of this is. Um, if we hit a certain threshold, then we have a discussion, it comes before council, we have a discussion about it, there may be. You know, and Mayor, I, I mentioned this to you earlier, there, there may be opportunities where. We, somebody is expected to, I don't know, dedicate an acre of parkland. And instead, they come forward and say, I want to build this, uh. Build this apartment building and I'm going to dedicate a third of an acre to have some space around there, can the rest of it be a fee in lieu? I mean, that, that's the, the opportunity we have to have some flexibility here, um, but. I, again, want to stipulate, I don't, I don't agree with doing it based on units, I think it needs to be done based on population. I, again, wanna stipulate, I don't, I don't agree with doing it based on units, I think it needs to be done based on population. And that's what Counselor Ryan had just said as well, so, um. I, I, I guess maybe if it's, I mean, we don't. We're not gonna get to consensus on this tonight, but I, y- you know, if needed, then we have staff. Prepare examples for both, um, both paths, right? One on population, one on units. I don't wanna give them more work to do, but I, I, I still think we need to s- to stick to the population density. Metric as the foundation for this.
Okay, thank you. So, given, um, this, I feel like we have, um, Counselor Cruz.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, as somebody who has potential concerns, I think this is a fine place to start. I'm interested in, um, reviewing, as you were mentioning, Mayor Strom. Ways to incorporate trans oriented development. Pieces into the staff discretion, discretion, and again, just like wanna note that there is. At least stip- as stipulated in the study, like a pretty linear, like unit to population. Number, and so I'm pretty neutral on that, but I think units. Makes more sense from a development like analysis perspective, at least from what I've heard from folks in the community. Um, so, s- just, just wanna name that there is like a ratio in there. And however we wanna manage it, we can work from that ratio.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and put aside and consider staff discretion discussed and done. Uh, next one I have is, uh, in fourteen point one six dot zero seven zero. Uh, see the, uh, annual review. Um, Counselor Lo had brought up, um. Something about fair market value, Mayor Protam Sharazai also mentioned in there, a role of council. Is there anything that we wanna address in that one tonight, or do we bring those up? Um, as potential amendments next week? I will, I open the floor to any counselor that has any feedback, or we just leave number four, or leave that one as is for now. Okay, we'll leave that one as is for now. Um, next one is spending in districts. Um, versus outside of districts, or one of the, the things that was, um, I had noticed in observations that Norwich had mentioned. Was that the districts do not seem nexus necessary and could. Be reduced and or be eliminated to provide greater flexibility and investing in areas in need and higher need within the city. The conversation tonight has kind of gone in that direction a couple of times, have tried in to focus on how do we increase. Air, parkland in areas that are underserved in the community, so I would open that one for discussion. Do we wanna entertain the idea of making any changes to the districts and or. Um, allowing funds to be collected in one and spent in another? Okay, I see thumbs up, so is that for allowing funds to be collected in one and spent in another, which is. Removing the restriction for districts. Mayor, uh, Counselor Matt Guerrero, hands up.
Um, the, the only way that that would feel all right to me is if there was a very clear. Rationale about why and for what, I think in particular, when we're looking at things like. Maintenance, like if that ends up being a part of it, or even capital improvements, I feel less like it should go multiple places. However, given that I am in a district with a lot less land and land is expensive because it's quite upzoned. Um, the, the world where targeted areas that we know are like park deserts, so to speak. Could be supported by other areas, isn't that terrible to me? I think that it adds a level of complexity and, and frankly, I think like. Ha- has the potential to reduce our ability to expand the really big parks. Parks that we have in the west and southern parts of the, of the full city, like as. That, when there are developments in those areas, I do think the idea that we expand those giant parks to be even bigger is, is really positive. Like those are gems and, um, so I think as, just somebody that's coming from like the districts that has the potential, I think, to benefit from that. Ca- recalculation, I'm not sure I'm in favor of it, I would have to see like. A lot of specifics played out on it, um. And I, and I don't really wanna sacrifice our ability to expand our, our largest parks. Because they create incredible ecosystem connectivity that smaller city parks serve important needs, but. That's a different concern that's not gonna be met through city parks, uh, through smaller city parks, so. I would, I would mostly be a no, um, unless there's sort of really compelling reasoning and rationale from some of my other counselors.
Thank you, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I was gonna say that I am open to the thought of, um, allocating dollars. Generally based on areas of highest need, particularly with the acquisition costs. But not like prohibiting the use of those dollars in, in different arenas based on how park staff identify needs or opportunities. Um, all that being said, I, I do think we should still have districts so that it's really clear to folks. Where money is being collected and how, what that through line is. Um, and also I would, I would potentially be interested in those, as was suggested being aligned with wards. Um, also because I heard that the concern around that, which I understand. Um, is challenging from an accounting perspective of how to funds that in an area. That maybe was on the borderline when a ward is increased based on population or changed. But if we're doing this whole thing based on population, as many people have noted. It actually seems pretty appropriate that the districts should be benchmarked in the same way, and so. I would be in favor of benchmarking wards to district, uh, districts towards as they stand.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
Uh, this question for legal, it, perhaps this is yet another one of the study session questions I thought came up. That there, again, there had to be a nexus and that nexus also included geography. S- can you elaborate on that and correct me?
Yeah, so, um, part of the essential nexus that you've, you've all heard about already with exaction law. It refers to, uh, basically a direct and substantial connection between the government imposed condition. And on, on the development permit or site plan or whatever we're talking about. And then the negative impact that that development is going to have on the community or area. And so there is some difficulty if we remove the, um, remove the, the planning districts themselves, or we say. The, these fees can go to areas of higher need, there would be some difficulty trying to establish that nexus, so. In, in real terms, if there was a development, again, I'll just use, I'll just say Planning District Six. Um, so out further kind of southwest in the city, and then we use the fees to, um. Acquire or do improvements on, let's say, some sort of park or open space in District One, uh, in the northeast part of the city. The city would have difficulty if that was somehow challenged establishing that nexus, because that development in Ward Six. How, what impact, what negative impact is that density gonna be having in, in Parkland District One? So I think when that came up in the study session, um, and I, I didn't lead that conversation, but I think. That was what they were describing, that it must have an essential nexus to. The development in the area that, um, that, that'll be impacting, that the project or development will be impacting.
So, so what I'm hearing. Tell me if this is not a fair summary, is that we're probably better off with some sort of boundary lines. Doesn't have to be the current boundary lines as proposed, um, but we need to have something. Or we should have something.
It would certainly help, um, help the city be able to better establish nexus and be able to articulate that. Um, some of the other ideas that were discussed tonight as far as redrawing boundary lines. Um, consolidating, so there were fewer, um, fewer parkland di- districts. Those are all, um, certainly feasible, those are, those are ideas that we could execute.
So then aligning it instead with wards, as some of our counselors have mentioned, would be feasible.
It would be feasible, our, um, Community Resources Department can speak to this a little bit better, they would have to, you know, obviously do some. Some creative, um, record keeping to make sure that whatever fees have already been provided, that those make it to the correct. You know, uh, ward or revised parkland district, but it is possible.
Okay, so do we have consensus from council to keep park land fees. Received within the ward, have them spent in the ward rather than as today. Seven districts, seven different districts across the city, do we have consensus there? I see some nodding heads, we're going with it. Perfect, thank you, everybody. Um, okay, next one I have down is vested rights timing, and. Maybe this is a question for Mr. Parker, is this the appropriate ordinance to be. Um, taking this subject up, or is that something that we need to have with our conversation around? Um, all the comp plan and zoning and everything that's coming this spring.
I'm sorry, can you, wh- what do you mean by vested rights timing?
When, at the time that, what is the time that determines when said fees. Are determined and or parkland dedication, Counselor Labir? Did we lose him? Um, oh, never mind, okay, well, it was actually his question, so if he's not here to talk about it. If I'm not able to give you all the information, then we'll just, we'll wait.
In general, if, if nothing else is done, the, the. The rules that apply to a project are the rules that are in place when they formally apply. So that's true for zoning, that's right now true for parkland, that's true for everything, so when they apply, the rules that are. In place that date continue to apply throughout the, the process of their application.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cruz.
Thanks, and, and just to clarify, cause I think I also have this question, there's just been some concerned thoughts in the community around exactly what that. Point is, so is that like upon the first. You know, application that will then undergo all of the site, res- like, I, I think. So I guess the question is, is it appropriate to spell that out here, since there's so much concern or question in the community of, of that, or. Should we just direct people to wherever in our statutes say what you just said?
That's fair, let, let me converse with legal on that over the next few days, and maybe we can make that part of the proposal that comes fo- forward. I don't, I think, I think it would be important not to make this particular subject different than everything else we do. Um, so as long as we can. Make sure it's the same across the board, um, so we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Alison and Lauren and we'll make sure we get that as part of the proposal.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Um, then I have. Counselor Matt Guerrero, Counselor Nystrom both had brought up and maybe more had mentioned it, less than three acres. And I forget where within the ordinance that was.
All right, it is, um, it is in fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero, criteria for lands not eligible for park and open space use.
There we go. So, do we have proposals for alternate size?
Is it, is it okay if I start? Thank you, I, I, so, I'm not sure that I would have, a- again, I think that if there's sort of pushback from experts to do. The city planning and the work, I am very open to learning more from staff about this, I think for me. I have seen the numbers on the like per acre, I, I would want to re-up the numbers on the per acre cost. Of maintenance, like as you scale down, but my recollection is that the last time that we looked at them, there was a less of a large jump. Than there was, I think at the original time, when, when the original ordinance was, I think in part because we've like increased our. Efficiency and our strategies on park maintenance, so things even like the smart water system, right, are. That we've talked about in, in other spaces are. Adding to this idea that like, eh, eh, that, that per, per acre cost per year is just not as, as large of a gap as it could be. So, I would essentially propose that that's. Not something that we have, that is not eligible for park or open space use. Um, I mean, unless we're really worried about what happens there is that we end up with ten by ten. Foot parks, like micro parks that fit one pa- park bench and a street light with a lot of commonality, but even then, I'm not totally opposed to those. So I, I defer a bit to city staff on, on if three acres is too large, uh, where they would put it. And then like why in terms of the cost there, I don't have that specific of thoughts, I would just take that part out, is like if I was just. Amending it right now, I would remove, um, letter E in that section. But I'm very open to however it makes the most sense, because I also don't wanna be irresponsible with that.
Counselor Nystrom.
Yeah, I, again, I, I agree, like, I, I don't think we should just. Rule something out because it's less than three acres, that's not realistic in this day and age, and. I think it's something that we need to, um. Consider, uh, again, but, and, and I guess going back to what. Was just discussed about, um. Uh, well, I, about the, the, the application process, I, 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 I think it's. It needs to be like a, a formal, like, yes, this, this is a formal application and here's the. Here's when it was submitted, so, eh, tha- that should be pretty clear, but. You know, again, I, I completely agree with Counselor Maya Guerrero about, um. You know, the small, small parks, um, should be a consideration, and, you know, they've been kind of laid out in some of the. Design documents, but, um. Uh, I, 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 three acres is a lot of land, you know? And like I said before, it's like, if somebody could allocate a third of an acre and pay the rest in fees or something like that, that's something we should be open to. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Lo.
This makes sense to me, can, can I just ask, um, our experts here, staff, maybe someone from Community Resources to weigh in on if we were to reduce the threshold? Like, what would be workable? Two acres, one point five acres, like at what point does it become just not workable for the city to maintain, you know, a park?
Um, so I would ask Ross to answer that, but understanding we don't have park maintenance staff with us tonight. And they're really the experts who can speak to, um, what it really means, um, to, to maintain. Small parkland, Ross, what would you like to say?
Wouldn't like to hold off on that a little bit, uh, like you said, we don't have park maintenance here. Uh, the last figures that I saw, uh, when they compared one large ten acre park with ten small one acre parks. We were looking at about approximately eighteen percent increase in cost. To maintain those smaller park sites there, but we'd have to look at that, it's a matter of manpower and, and of having the budget. To, to maintain them, uh, that it's going to ca- it's a council decision to provide those funds and those resources to do that.
You have more, Counselor Lo, ready done?
No, I, uh, yeah, that, I mean, that. I'm, I'm, this makes sense to me, I, I'd like, I think it'd be useful to get staff's opinion on this over the next week. I think the, I'm for this, the question is whether to just eliminate that provision like Counselor Matt Guerrero said. Or reduce it to a threshold of maybe two or one point five acres, that's sort of, I think, maybe a, a question to consider.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ryan.
And I apologize for chiming in on all these, and, uh, Counselor Matt Guerrero, maybe you can help me, uh, understand the concern, is the concern that. We'll have a park that's held but in private ownership, open to the public. That, that's too large of a park that's held in private, because what it says is that the director. Um, may requ- can, can allow this to remain in private ownership, provided the privately. Owned parkland is open to the public and is three acres or less, so as I read it, we're saying, okay. You can have a park that's privately owned. you can have a park that's privately owned and also maintained by the private owner that's open to the public. And I'm trying to understand what the concern is.
So Counselor Ryan, where are you? What section are you on? Cause you might, we might be looking at two different spots.
Oh, ma- ma- maybe, maybe. I was, I was looking at, um,
It, it, we're looking at the same part, fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero, uh, subset, or, uh, sorry, subpoint E.
E is never.
And then right after that gives, um, what was just talked about in terms of, uh, AMI, but the, the whole, yes. So this is specifically the following criteria will apply in determining what type of uh, land, uh, nature of land will not meet the requirement for dedication. Um, and then this one specifically says, uh, the things about three acres shall not be considered for city shit. That is the last part of that component.
No, I was on the wrong one. The mayor's correct. I'm, I apologize.
Well, I will say that the way that I'm reading this, it also says it's just about city ownership for that size. And my, so just to respond to the question, my, my concern is, is a couple fold. One, um, is that yes, I do think that the, the best possible public space is public, fully. It is publicly owned, publicly operated, publicly maintained. Um, public lands are owned by the public, right? Like our taxpayers own the land when we have it as our park. That is a, an asset that is um, a specific good investment of, for, of taxpayer dollars. And they've told us repeatedly that that is what they would like us to be spending their money. This is particularly coming from a fee to get it. Um, but at that point, like we, we want, the, the whole idea here, right, is that we're making development like subsidize the public good. So the best possible public good is something that is not just available to the public, but is also jointly owned by the public. So that's one thing is I just, as a, as a value set, a publicly owned park is always going to be better for me than a privately owned park, no matter the access.
But your three acres is at points zero six zero?
Uh, it is, it is, uh, six E, fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero E.
Okay, I apologize. I was looking at point zero seven zero E. So my mistake. I mean, I mean, I, not, not, not E, but anyway, anyway.
It, it does still have the same concern. It does, it still has the same concern that you're expressing of like, it's just about city ownership. So one, I have that value, but two, I would say that like, um, my, my other concern is that in places like the, the furthest north, like near Olfax and, um, the light rail, that three acres is hard to come by. So something that delayed the Two Creeks Park and delayed the Two Creeks Park and delayed the Two Creeks Park was getting our last like parcel of land to be large enough to meet the threshold. And there was other things, of course, I'm oversimplifying due to amount of minutes that I've sat in this chair. Um, but, but I think that this idea that like, we want to actually have as much flexibility as possible i- in terms of, in, in what is financially feasible for the city in terms of what really, what ends up becoming city land. I, I think that that is the only reason. Because putting acres together is, is very expensive and difficult.
My apology, Mayor, I was on the wrong section.
Happens.
It is the same concern though, is it not? In both sections?
Counselor Ryan, did you want, were you done? Okay. Uh, Counselor Six.
Thank you. So I don't, I, I really appreciate the way, um, Counselor Mia Guerrero articulated public lands for public people, et cetera. And so I agree with that. However, I'm, I'm interested in knowing about E because I don't see E in any, in, in, in previous drafts. So this is the, the first time E comes up, I believe. And so I wonder if, I wonder the explanation and who put it in there and who was thinking three acres as opposed to fewer, fewer acres. So do we know who drafted that? Who put that in there and why?
Ross, can you respond to that?
Yes. The, what we were anticipating, we've looked at the standard, trying to find a size that's maintainable and, and stay within our cost realms. And that's where that, uh, in E showed up. And it's similar to what other cities have, uh, looked at in public ownership for their park spaces, uh, and trying to encourage the private developments of smaller, uh, smaller sites to be public out there.
So just to reword possibly what you said, if I got it right, so less than three acres, would that be a hardship for the city then? Is that what you were saying? Did I get that right? Cause it's kind of, yeah.
That would add to the financial cost of maintaining our park space. Uh, I guess you as city council members would need to determine if that's a truly a hardship on the city to, and looking for budgets to maintain those spaces.
And we're going to provide some information from our parks manager that compares, um, maintenance costs between really small acreage and larger. So that'll give you more information I, um, before you make any decisions.
Great. Thanks for that perspective. That's all I had.
Thank you. Counselor Nystrom.
I, I, I get, um, there's a reference in the Imagine, um, Tomorrow document that says maintenance costs are the same for small pocket parks under one point five acres as they are for parks two to ten acres. So I'm confused. So I guess, yeah, um, if the city manager could follow up on, you know, getting some more information on that, to clarify would help.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. I feel like we have what we need on that one and we'll come back to that conversation next week. Does everybody agree? Okay. All right. The next one that I have is, um, Counselor Mia Guerrero had brought up so further clarification on defining what public interest is of a public interest on fourteen dash sixteen dash zero seven zero. Are we in agreement that we would like to add some defining factors around public interest? It's a couple of nods.
Want to information?
Okay. Yep.
Where, I've, I've been trying to find that, 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 that citation. Where, where exactly in zero, in zero point seven is the public interest thing?
Page five, it's B.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's a part of public interest.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, it's sort of, it's very, it's, it's essentially trying to add some additional components, I probably within the whereas is in the beginning of the ordinance around that clarification of, of trying to serve the best public interest. Um, and enumerating, I think a lot of the values that we've talked about tonight, I think if other counselors want to add, I think we have expressed a lot of um, common, common values as to like why this is necessary. And so that is essentially what I would want to put in. It could be, there is some of that already within the, the whereas part, like the intro, the, I mean, the declaration is, I guess. Um, I also think it could be within a definition section. It could be something that is referred to at that, like within that section. I, I don't particularly mind the approach. But I, I think that currently the sort of like purpose that's outlined at the start has some good things in it, but we want to be a little bit more um, a little bit clearer and specifically reference that phrase in order for it to be used later.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then last one I have is looking at fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero. Um, I don't have the number. I didn't write the number down. Let's see. Oh, B. Fourteen dash sixteen dash zero six zero, D, page five. Uh, Counselor Matt Guerrero had mentioned removing hazardous wildlife areas from that verbiage. Would everybody agree that that actually gets a little challenging now as we have urban areas on fire? Do we remove and hazardous wildfire areas?
I might offer that, you should, I, I don't know that we as the council, and if other council members feel differently, of course, I, I, we will all step in. But I had, I think more of like a question and it's about, can we remove that because it limits our ability to add, add parkland, particularly in the western part of Lakewood? Or is it just an insurance issue? I think that that's a question that is just, like, I, I, if it is about wildfire insurance and like our city property, I don't think that that is worth getting rid of. So for me, it's mostly just that. The core question.
Good point. That one might need to be maybe a talk to CFO question. Okay. So no decision on that guy tonight. That was my list. From everybody, everybody, or everything everybody gave us this evening. Uh, so, um, Counselor Lo.
Sorry. I know everyone is probably ready to not be doing this, um, including me. But did I, apologies if I missed this. Did we, do we cover the affordable housing question? That there was a lot of discussion around that.
Oh, God, no, we did. We missed that one. That was the big one I would save for last. Thank you. Sorry about that.
And the, the one other one which I think is really, really easy is, um, uh, I, I, I think we, I, I may have, I may have missed the opportunity to speak on this one earlier, but uh, on, on, so affordable housing and then, um, I think we, there was a consensus, we didn't need to clarify the, sorry, I'm losing my words. Counselor Ryan made the point about, about updating, um, fee and lieu based on inflation. So maybe an amendment that does that.
Well, it's in there now as an annual review. But I think maybe there were some parameters that somebody had mentioned that they wanted to tighten up. But it's been there already.
More prescriptive a- annual review and, and, and at a minimum adjusting it based on, on CPI or something like that.
I see one nod. Do we see other nods on that?
Yeah, but I would also add, you know, my comment earlier that can we just get clarification or, or confirmation that that was done on an annual basis? Because it was in the ordinance before and it lapsed for about five or eight years, I think it was. So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kurt.
Thanks. Yeah, on, on that point, and we can get into details. I would just want to make sure that whatever value we're using is like linked to the right things. Like CPI is very particularly about like food goods, all those things. I don't know if that's the best. Anyway, so I know I am making this longer. So just, I agree that it needs to be tracked to something. I think we just need to make sure it's the right thing. Um, I also just did want to flag, and, and this is small and I can just work on it. I just did want more clarification I, about like drainage areas or other things that could count as a parkland dedication. I don't know if we got to that, but I think the affordable housing one is.
Clarify what your, um, a- as far as drainage, like that it does get included, doesn't get included. I know it was in here, something was in here about that somewhere. Let's see. On page five, top of page five.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm looking at page four. I think it's fourteen dash sixteen dash oh five zero. Um, and it's talking about, um, like the, the area that could be um, qualified for dedication. And it says public plazas in E, play spaces, trail segments, drainage areas and other public spaces. And so I was just a little bit curious why in that list, like drainage areas, which I wouldn't necessarily classify in the same way as a trail or a public plaza was on that list and if that was appropriate.
Right, Ross, can you give some examples of, um, how we've used drainage areas and parkland in the past?
With where we have accepted in, for dedications or anything like that, it's been where it's been, been above and beyond what is already required by our, our drainage ordinance, uh, that in this for oh five oh E, the drainage area, I'm not, that was added by accident, I believe. So it's not necessarily the, the case. That might be an area for change there. Uh, if you go on to the next page in oh six zero, um, and that's, uh, basically B, there talks about, we would not typically accept land that's required by our storm drain and Jordans such as detention ponds and retention ponds that are used for drainage purposes primarily. Uh, if we're looking at, we look at floodway fringes, whatever's beyond that, that may be i- in a, a flood plain area. We do have some detention ponds that are online. Some parks are in detention ponds, uh, such as Richie Park is, uh, online detention pond. Uh, then you look at, uh, we also have Lakewood Estates has a large detention facility for Lakewood Estates area. So there are, depending on the situation, when there was, had been flexibility in the past to look at opportunities to, uh, improve uh, facilities and work together with our drainage folks. Uh, it really works very well if we look at, um, drainage ways as trail quarters eventually and work on trying to, uh, I, like we're doing along, we're, our dry, dry gulch is uh, where we have maintenance roads along drainage improvements, those become trail systems. And we like to see connectivity of these neighborhoods through these areas. So we, we, every situation is different. And that's what I've discovered with this past couple of weeks that looking at the things, the, the particular cases, not any one of them is exactly the same as another situation because there are so many different uh, things that have happened in the city's past that, uh, changes the opportunities of what we see out there.
Thank you. And yeah, thank you. I think that this speaks to the wealth of experience you bring with, with all of the work you've done for, for parks. So just thank you for the answer.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Uh, sorry, my hand is still up from one affordable housing. Was it maybe about, or the, yeah, the affordable unit was about to be talked about and then I didn't back down.
Yeah. Then, I know it's your, it, you have the floor for affordable.
Okay. Um, I will say that I don't think that we will probably end up at consensus this evening and I want to encourage us to not. Um, but the things that I am thinking about are, um, I think Counselor Ryan had brought up this idea of, um, if it's ten percent of the units, say, then only ten percent of, of the units within the calculation get taken out of the calculation of the fee or the land or et cetera. Um, and to me, the reason that I want to keep it like a lower AMI, but then like it basically exempts either a lot or all of, of this, um, is is because of, of genuinely wanting to like add layers of like really targeted benefit for that lower level of AMI. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm down for that sliding space in conversation. I think it's about like if the draft we have has the, um, like those components within it, no matter where they're at, we'll be able to like amend it and figure it out, um, at the, at the time. So I'm thinking like the percent of AMI, the percent of the units, um, and then how that relates to either an all or a like ratio amount of um, parkland dedication and fee and lieu are like the three things that we will have to figure out. Uh, but those, like I think to me, as long as those components are within there, we can have some additional information from staff on, on those items. Then I think we'll likely be able to figure out through the amendment process and the full, and the public hearing process, like where those need to land and through some additional stakeholding. Um, I also just want to, um, recognize, I think Counselor Nystrom's points about wanting to make sure that we're not putting affordable housing into just like the sort of least human design, um, just to recognize. Um, just to recognize that this is only one tool, right? This is about larger swatches of land and, and dedication that hopefully we, we'll get this approximately right. So we'll, we'll continue to see an influx of these community spaces, parklands, et cetera, um, that everyone will be able to use. But then also we have like landscaping and setbacks and other design requirements, sustainability requirements, which will of course still be within those buildings. Um, so that was, I think, all of the variables I'm thinking about with affordable housing.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
I, I just wanted to signal, I'm open to some creative thoughts on this. I'm not, um, stuck on, well, it has to be, we only take those units out. But I am concerned however, I mean, there are very real, realistic proposals that may come before us where we could be adding a couple of thousand, either people or a couple thousand units, I'm not sure which. Uh, and if we say, well, if you make 200, 200 of them, uh, affordable, however we define that, then you don't have to do any parkland dedication. That's a lot of people. Uh, so I'm open to creative solutions and I wanted to signal that I'm not hearts set, set in stone on my initial comment there. But I do want us to be thinking about making sure that we're providing parkland for a considerable number of people in, in some of these projects.
Counselor Low.
Yep. My proposal, for what it's worth, I, I think this is pretty aligned with what Counselor Mike Guerrero said, but feel free to correct me, Counselor Mike Guerrero, would be that if you, if you, you basically look at a blended average, so if, if a project sets aside 10% of units at 60% AMI, they qualify. If they set aside 20% of the units at, at 80% AMI, it qualifies. Or, you know, if, if you were 50% units at, at 80% AMI, then you would, you would more than qualify. So as long as you meet that, that, the sort of the blended average threshold that we set, then you're, you're qualified as an affordable housing project for the purpose of this ordinance. And that means you don't have Fee and Lou. But to Counselor Ryan's point and Counselor Nystrom's point, um, I agree, these folks absolutely, you know, we, we want to make sure that there's, that there's open space. So what if we add a provision that says, and if you, if, if that project will set aside a courtyard or a community garden as part of their site plan that would meet the requirements, then they'll actually get a subsidy from the, 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 the Fee and Lou, um, fund, you know, that, that will be paid for by Fee and Lou that will support that set aside. Um, so that would be both an incentive for an affordable housing project to actually set aside a community garden and a meaningful carrot for projects to, to include affordable housing.
So question for legal, does that sound like something that could be legal?
Allison, I can defer to Allison. We're really going to have to go do some research to figure out how to make that work. Because remember, the, the dollars of Fee and Lou are collected specifically to meet the needs of the people who are paying it. So the developer pays for site A and you can't take the dollars from, that were devote, that were, uh, put into the pot for parkland dedication for the people living in development A and apply them or, or pay the people in, in development D. Because you're not meeting the parkland needs with park with, by transferring it that way. So there may be ways that we can innovatively look at this, but, um, Kathy and I need to sit down together and look at where it is you want to land and some innovative paths to get ourselves there. So just so you know, what, we're not saying no about anything. We're really trying to just keep track of where you're going with this.
No, I hear that. Maybe we could sever the question, so po- po- point A is just the, the blended allocation that exempts you from Fee and Lou. And then the, the, the dicier second part is whether there's a way to subsidize affordable housing projects that, that actually set aside open space.
So do we have then consensus on the idea of doing a blended average within there? So that does give some benefit to those doing 60% AMI, but potentially other benefits to those that are doing 80% AMI? Okay.
Recognizing we're going to have to argue a lot about what those numbers are, but yes.
Yeah. That's fine, we just need to get somewhere so we have somewhere to start next week. Um, okay. Any others that we did not cover tonight? So then my next question would be for all of our staff that's on the call this evening. I would love the opportunity, if there's any clarity that we need to provide to you tonight, something that we didn't land on, that you might need a little bit more direction for. Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
I actually don't think so. I think we have a lot, we've all been taking a lot of notes, so it's hard to know specifically, um, what we need follow up on, but like, give us a chance to just work through it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everybody, um, everyone involved. I know this has been an incredibly time intensive effort, um, over the last two, three months. And really appreciate from a staff perspective, everything that you guys have put in and counselors, everything that you guys have put in. I know that there's been a lot of time listening to community members, a lot of time trying to discern, you know, how you, um, want to move forward, we want to move forward, lots of reading, lots of research. And, um, we still have quite a ways to go before we're over the finish line. So thank you to everybody. Um, and for you, those residents across the city that are chiming in or listening tonight and or in the days to come, thank you very much for your patience with us as we continue to try to work through this very thoughtfully so that we are really ultimately, um, continuing to invest in our parks and open space. That is one thing that, you know, has been resounding obvious, um, from many of our residents that we, you know, many of us picked Lakewood because of the parks. And we want to continue to make sure that we are keeping those, um, at the forefront of, of everything as we're moving through this conversation. So, um, thank you all for your patience with us. And again, next Monday night, we will have a public hearing in, um, in conjunction with our second reading of the ordinance. So do let us know if you have any thoughts, questions on that. And, um, please do join us either on Lakewood Speaks to put in comments there and or, um, joining us in chambers next Monday night. Hopefully we are back with everybody in person. I believe that we can be past our COVID ails, um, and live in real life next Monday. So with that, um, no other for this evening. I will go ahead and adjourn us tonight at nine fifty-four PM.